Well, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Monday, January tenth meeting of the Salem City Council. I'll call it to order and ask the recorder to please call the roll.
Mayor Bennett, I'm not sure we've got it staffed with the recorder at this point.
We don't? Okay, why don't we just sound off? President R. Bennett?
Louis.
Virginia Stapleton.
Okay.
Anderson.
Everybody, everybody sound off? We got enough, so.
Nordike as well.
You're here? Okay. Jose, have you sounded off yet?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and Hoya, I heard you. All right, join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, our first order of business is election of the council president.
Mr. Mayor, I think we're doing planning commission interviews first.
Not on my agenda. Yeah, did we change the agenda?
No.
Okay, show pledge of allegiance, then election of council president.
You're correct, Mr. Mayor, but I think we're doing the interviews first and then we'll move into the regular meeting after that's over.
Great, why don't we next time set this up so it shows it the way you'd like to have it? Okay, that'd be great. Alrighty. Linda, do you want to start us off on this?
Well, I certainly can. You will be interviewing three people tonight for positions on the Planning Commission. That is Robert Birma, Jordan Truitt, and Logan Lor. I had sent some suggested interview questions last week, so I think counselors may be prepared to begin the interview process however you want to set that up. And then you will be voting later this evening in the council meeting on your selections.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, well, why don't we begin? We've got, let's see, Logan Lor, Jordan Truitt, and who's my other?
Robert Birma, and I'm not seeing him on the I don't believe I'm seeing him yet.
Hey.
Linda, let me send a note to Chuck if he's not listening in here to see if Mr. Birma's on the other line.
Thank you, Jim.
He's not in the waiting room.
Okay, great. We'll move ahead then. If he shows up, we'll give him an opportunity to answer questions. Why don't we just, if you don't mind, I'm gonna just run across my screen and it makes it a little easier for me to just call on people to ask any questions. You know, Jordan and Logan Lor, and would you like to have just a very brief introduction by each of them as to who they are and why they're here? Would that help you out, kind of get us going? Okay. Jordan, would you like to go ahead, introduce yourself? Kind of what, what brings you to this Zoom meeting as opposed to all other possible Zoom meetings on a Monday night?
I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
Sound check, everybody can hear me all right?
Yes.
Great, okay. Greetings, everybody. Mr. Mayor Bennett, members of council, Jordan Truitt from Disneyland. So, that's my hotel.
Really, that's where you are?
No joke. I'm literally in Disneyland and I forgot to check, but I probably have about thirty thousand steps at this point. Today was day one. We took our kids to the park and they're at dinner, so I've got a moment of silence. So if they do barge in for some reason, I apologize, but this is a promise we made eight years ago when we had our daughter and we're here and lo and behold, we're doing it. So, we're in. Jordan Truitt, born and raised in Salem, grew up there in the food processing business by trade. I'm a commercial real estate broker in Salem. My background is vast and sweeping that led me up to that. I will spare you the details of all that, but I've been in business, I've been a commercial pilot, deeply invested in this community, so much so that I'm calling in from Disneyland. So, I thank you for your time and hearing and reviewing my application and I look forward to answering your questions.
Great, thank you, Jordan. Logan, would you like to introduce yourself?
Hi there, my name is Logan Lor. I've been a resident of Salem for over thirty-five years. Immigrant to Salem at the age of twelve, been here ever since. So, I'm really interested in, in seeing this city grow and helping this city grow. That's why I'm here tonight.
Great, excellent. Well, thank you, both of you, for application and for being here this evening. And then I'm gonna just start off. Y'all have a list of questions if you'd like to work off that or if you have your own questions you'd like to ask. I'm gonna begin with Tom Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've been scrolling through and I've never found my questions, so I'm gonna ask my own questions.
Excellent.
And I'll start, I'll ask kind of the same one for both and I'll start with you, Mr. Truitt. And I'll tell you, I've got you beat. I have come to city council meetings all the way from the Himalayan Mountain Kingdom of Bhutan, where I had to get up at four o'clock in the morning to be at these meetings.
Sort of Disneyland of the East, right?
Yes, it is. I'm curious about two things, Jordan. The first is whether you would call yourself, you're a real estate person, are you also a developer? And then I'd also just be interested in your family holdings and how you think that all fits into, to work on the planning commission. I'm specifically not, this doesn't relate to planning commission, but interested in the plan on Front Street, but that's a whole other issue. But I just want to, two of those things. Would you consider yourself a developer and how do you think your family interest actually would help you in, in being on the commission?
Oh, thank you, Counselor Anderson. Let's, we're just kicking this rodeo right off, so let's get into it. By trade and, and actually by having any sort of lack of experience in doing so, I and my family are not developers. We have not pretended to be so and do not aspire to be developers. However, in nineteen seventy-two, when my father and my uncle landed in Salem and took over the canning operation, they knew that the long-term vision for Front Street was a prosperous place that included activities and residential and housing and mixed use for the community. It was not, it was not something that was, that was envisioned as something for themselves. And that is still the goal i- in, in real estate through property holdings and then through a lifelong, a lifetime spent in Salem is seeing positive development come into Salem to create the jobs and the housing that we so desperately need and, and check all those boxes that we need for that area of town that, that really is primed for growth. So, there will probably, and I'll just go ahead and say, there will probably issues where I will have to recuse myself if something were to come up on Front Street and I happily and admittedly would do so. I do not want to taint the water, so to speak, by my involvement for any sort of personal or company or familial gain. That is not the intention at all. We genuinely, genuinely have for decades want to see positive growth and development. And, and having been here for my whole life and working down there and growing up on Front Street, it really is something that is in our DNA to see that happen, so.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, do you want me to ask Mr. Lor questions now or do you want to just go?
Why don't we, why don't we do a, why don't you go ahead? Why don't you go ahead and each of you can ask each of the guys a question? Yeah.
Mr. Lor, nice to see you again, Logan.
Yes, good seeing you, Mr. Anderson.
I, I, I'm interested in two things with you, sir. The first is if you have any background or experience that you believe would help you in the planning commission, and this is not to say that certain backgrounds as a developer or as a property owner maybe help, maybe don't help, but I'm interested in that. And then my second question is in your questionnaire to us, you talked a lot about congestion and traffic congestion and parking, and I'd just like to hear your thoughts about that a little bit on the planning commission.
Okay, so I don't have, I don't have any interest in real states or dwellings or businesses that would in any shape or form interfere with my job as a planning commissioner. Just put that on the table. As far as background and, and planning commission, I don't have any background as far as relating to planning or commissioning. I own a house in Salem. My family relies in Salem. Been a resident of Salem for over thirty-five years, like I said, and so my interest is in the city and the growth of the city and to make sure that we preserve and we, and, and that we are a sustainable city moving forward. With that said, I, I did mention a lot about my, my discomfort with the way the city of Salem is growing and the congestion in downtown West Salem that are still occurring and there's nothing that was being done about it or nothing in the foreseeable future plan that are being done about it. The parking, as we all know, parking in downtown Salem, it's, it's horrible. The only way to get to West Salem is through the Marion Bridge and the congestion in West Salem, as we all know, is the Wallace Road in West Salem. And there needs to be more, we need to do more as far as parking for West Salem so that people don't have to drive over. They can park in West Salem and commute over on a mass transit or we'll have shuttle that transport people back and forth so that we elevate a lot of the congestion in downtown Salem.
Thank you. Mr. Lewis, any questions?
Sure. Thanks, gentlemen, for your willingness to volunteer. Serving on the planning commission for ten years, I can guarantee you it's, it's never-ending fun. And maybe to that point, let me ask, ask a question that's been, I think on my mind, especially over the last few days. There are times where the planning commission is stuck in the middle. There are gonna be reports from the staff and proponents on land use that, that purport to follow the Oregon land use laws and the city codes. And there are also folks that, especially those that are in close proximity to development, see their lives changing and changing forever. How do you balance that? I'd like to get your, your comments on that.
Thank you, Counselor Lewis. I suppose I'll go first again, or?
Yeah, please.
Okay, all right. Thank you for the question. In short, I, I, I believe that developer i- as a whole has, has generated kind of a bad word for itself. I think development can be very inclusive in which it supplies services and jobs and housing and industry for vast segments of people. As we know, we're, we're very low on industrial supply of ground. We're very low on housing and the housing need for all categories of housing right now, particularly apartments and, and, and lower income areas is, is very crucial and critical. And so, for somebody who's living next to a development, I, I can fully sympathize with concern and hesitation over wanting to see some of that go through, but as it relates to land use and part of the, the role of planning commission reviewing applications, reviewing land use and what's permitted in these areas, I think it, it has to have that human element where you can, you can evaluate not read necessarily in black and white what's in the code, but what is beneficial, what might hurt a community, what might benefit a community, and how do we incorporate these into further dialogue and discussion for the greater good of the area? So, I, I don't know if that entirely answers your question. Perhaps it does.
Good, thank you. Mr. Lor, would you wanna, did you want to ask Mr. Lor the same question, Jim?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner Lewis. I think a lot of the times we're dealing with developers or private investors that are coming into our cities trying to belt, trying to make a future better in, in a sense for, for their own good. I think as, as commissioners, we have to really look at whether or not the developers will benefit the city and the people of the city and further the the, the plan of the city's development. Also, you know, we have to protect the interests of the private property owners. And we can't let developers comes in and, and bully private property owners into taking away their property or developing their properties without the consent of the neighborhood association or taking considerations, the congestions that might be developing in, in the foreseeable future in that neighborhood.
Thank you. Counselor Nordike.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
All right, thank you. I will have the same question for the two candidates. Mr. Truitt, good evening. Thank you so much for being here tonight. And I want to ask you about affordable housing. At city council meetings, we frequently review matters that come to us from planning commission where, on the one hand, we have developers who want to fill the housing gap in our community, but on the other hand, we hear all the time about how difficult it is to build housing at any price point, especially affordable price points due to a scarcity of labor, scarcity of supplies, and everything else that the pandemic has thrown at us. So, I, my question really is, we hear a lot about these challenges, but we need people with technical expertise who can get beyond the lip service that we often hear and can discern when it makes the most sense to incentivize affordable housing and not. So I'm just kind of curious, what kind of experience and expertise would you bring to assessing potential development in the area of affordable housing?
Thank you, Counselor Nordike, for the question. For those of you who know me, you know I'm, I am deeply invested in wildfire recovery and as a board member of the United Way Mid Vallet Valley, my experience in trying to find solutions and loopholes in the system so that we can generate affordable housing on not just an emergency, but on a creating a whole new model, proof of concept, is very near and dear to my heart. I am very aware of the urgent and pressing need of, for, and for affordable housing in the community. I see it in my job as a commercial real estate agent. I see it as a Salemite. I see it in the United Way. I see it in the fallout wildfires. I know that it is critical and it's not just building, buying land, building and putting up apartments and, and then flipping it for a developer to generate an income. That is, that is not my personal view on how affordable housing should be done. That said, the flip side of it, affordable housing is not affordable to make. So how do we find the middle ground and the gap in there? And I believe that what I bring to the table is a several years of experience in trying to find alternatives in the system that are not necessarily large, prop-up, brand-new apartments that are expensive, but how can we find the needs and, and build the needs for the, for the residents of Salem who may have been evicted and cannot get into a new place? There may not be a new place available. They may have fallen on hard times. They may have fallen ill. We need to have solutions in place to, to, to meet those needs. And so kind of melding the, the emergency needs that we've experienced, the fire, and then along with just the critical day-to-day needs of a lot of our residents in Salem, working through to, to try to get to some of these solutions i- is, is critical. And, and I, I look forward to working on those projects.
Thank you, Mr. Truitt. I had the same question for you, Mr. Lor. Do you need me to repeat it?
No, no. I got it. Thank you. So I think affordable housing, affordable housing for Salem is just one fact, one sector of the many issues that we have in Salem. Of course, I live in northeast Salem for the majority of my, my, growing up and my life. And I've seen northeast Salem being a apartment complex part of Salem just because it's, it's I don't want to use this word, but it's easier to develop in, in apartment complexes in northeast Salem. I've seen far more apartment complexes being built in northeast Salem than any part of Salem. And I like, I like the fact that it's, it's, it's the majority of the low-income family does reside in northeast Salem because that's as much as they, they can afford. But I like for the city of Salem to be more, to, to have more incentive for, for those people that want their kids to go to different school that they can afford to move to a different part of Salem, to raise their kids in a different part of Salem. And that's what we have not done. The other component is, we need more private job in Salem. We don't have enough private businesses in Salem to accommodate the people that live in Salem. Most people that live in Salem commute to Portland to work. And the people that work in Salem don't live in Salem.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lor. Counselor Gonzalez.
Yeah, same question for both. Thank you for being here. Easy question, maybe. It's, if it's, let's say you're in twenty thirty, describe Salem. Any way you want to. Just describe Salem in twenty thirty.
Okay, you want me to go first? I go first. Since, since Jordan's been gone for a couple, the first two questions. So twenty thirty, I like to see Salem with a, a some kind of light rail that would elevate the amount of congestion in, in downtown Salem and West Salem. We, we went back and forth on this third bridge for many, many years and it's been voted down so many times. And I don't think that the funding would be there since we have to do a seismic update on both bridge and to build a new bridge. That's not, it may not happen in twenty thirty. So, with that being said, I think a light rail system, a better transit system to help Salem elevate the, the problems in downtown Salem. I like to see more business, private businesses come to Salem. I see more private businesses come to, to Kaiser than it is in Salem. And that means we're not doing, we're not working hard enough to attract private businesses.
Jordan?
Okay. I, I love, I love Salem. I love Salem the way it is. And I, I love the evolution of growth that we are witnessing in Salem. And it, and it's on a scale that still, you know, I just, I put myself in the shoes of somebody who doesn't live from Salem. God, why do you live, why do you live in Salem? Because Salem is really awesome and I really want to see positive beneficial growth. So in twenty thirty, I, I still want to see the skyline be similar to what it is. But I really want to realize a lot of that positive beneficial urban infill, new businesses, new housing, new jobs, revitalization of existing communities. I would love to see money come into the city that benefits a lot of the, the neighborhoods and the employment basis that create that positive growth that is not a boom overnight that is a change in the skyline, but a, a very calm, cool and collected, steady, sustainable growth that still looks like Salem.
Thank you. Counselor Leon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Lor and Mr. Truitt for attending today's interview session. So I have a same question for the two of you. Taking in consideration that, for example, Mr. Truitt, you went to two other commission meetings besides the planning commission and, Mr. Lor, you've attended the Human Rights Commission meetings. Why now are you applying for this and why in particular this committee?
Mr. Lor?
Yes.
Go ahead.
So, my, my particular interest in the planning commission is that I want a more proportioned growth for Salem as Salem moves forward and the growth. Like, like I've said before, we have developed more and more low-income housing units in the northeast Salem, and it should be more proportion throughout Salem so that people have an opportunity to, to, to move around, to move to a different location, to move their family to a different location, to, to have their kids go to a different school district. This, I think this will further and enable families to come to be more more sustained, be able to, to be able to, to better their kids, to, to have the opportunity for their kids to go to, to college if they want.
Okay, very good. Mr. Truitt?
Thank you, Counselor Leon, for the question. I, I would prefer to not let my attendance speak for my involvement as far as matters within the city, whether it's council or planning commission. I'm very in tune with what's going on as a member of the Downtown Advisory Board, even though that is not planning commission level, planning commission level review. As a matter of my job and my livelihood and my place in Salem, I'm very in tune with what is happening. My desire to serve is inherent. I'm following in some very big footsteps that were put before me and I've really kind of found a place of my own that has led me to this. And as you know, this is not my first time applying for planning commission. This is my second round and I'm back and I will probably be back a third time if I'm not voted in today. So I take no offense either way. You're just gonna have to deal with me. So, I, I, I am devoted to Salem. I'm devoted to the community. I'm devoted to planning commission to council. And while I may not be present at certain meetings, I promise you that I am watching the the videos that are recorded on YouTube, watching with the city. I'm keeping track of any proposals that come up and, and I do keep an open line of communication with certain groups and agencies, many of them actually, that do come in front of and, and participate in these, in these meetings, so.
Thank you. Counselor Phillips?
Thank you, Mayor Bennett. Thank you, Jordan and Logan, for taking the time to be here tonight and for your interest in serving. I mean, short of being on the city council itself, I think this is the biggest time commitment, so, you know, it is, it is worthwhile. Thank you for expressing your interest. You know, I guess I'm just gonna get to it. We've probably got some really, you know, difficult moments in our, in our future, you know, that, that are we're gonna have to confront as a community. We've just lived through one of the most, you know, turmoil-filled last year, year and a half on record in terms of, you know, disruption to our environment, you know, the ongoing impacts of, you know, climate disruption, of the pandemic, you know, you name it. So, you know, I guess, you know, knowing that there's that future that we're all looking at, the data shows it's coming and we're living the consequences of those things now. What, you know, role do you see the planning commission have in, in helping, you know, the city of Salem achieve its goals in terms of, you know, greenhouse gas reduction? I mean, we've set the real-world target of reducing emissions by fifty percent in, you know, twenty thirty or twenty thirty-five and by a hundred percent in twenty fifty. How do you think the? How do you think the the Planning Commission can help us achieve those goals? And, you know, tack on, you know, anything you can think of to help us with the pandemic too.
Jordan, why don't you go ahead?
Happy to. Thanks for the, thank you for the question. There has to be a a positive component to any sort of development, redevelopment, new construction. And in in working with Downtown Advisory Board and reviewing the climate plan that is certainly currently before council. There are definitely some some components in there that I think add a lot of value to addressing climate change. Salem is very congested. There are a tremendous amount of single vehicle trips every single day. And and admittedly, I am guilty of that as well. I would love to see a reduction of that, how we do that. I'm not a climatologist, I don't have the answer. But I am keeping very close tabs and have read through the climate plan for the city. And I I really am in favor of the beautification of the city streets, the streetscapes, planting of trees. Green areas, buffers. I work on on several projects where stormwater is a major issue. And how do we address that by not having too much impervious pavement or surfaces? How do we let the natural surface? Continue to retain and hold water to create shade, the trees for hot zones. And so I know that the airport is a red hot zone because of all the pavement. So in in going through that, obviously, it's a very big concern. And one that should be addressed regardless of an individual's perception of 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 climate change. I I am not a denier and I know that we need to be proactive about how we address this. But we have to walk a very tight line with also not wanting to impose drastic fees that would further impede additional beneficial development or streetscaping, tree planting, et cetera. So I I think single vehicle, single vehicle trips, more natural habitats, shade. And then as well as, you know, ways to retain and reduce the amount of heat that gets into the city. I think it would be very beneficial.
Thank you, Mr. Law.
Thank you, Counselor Philip. I think. I think we all know that this it's. It doesn't matter where we live, we're all faced with a climate change that affect our lives locally and and nationally. For us to be sustained, for us to be on the Planning Commission team. We have to think of sustainability of the city first. The road has to be, we have to make roads that are able to accommodate. Accommodate pedestrians and bikers. We have to make sure that our old growth trees in in the cities are not being cut down. If they're needed to be cut down, make sure we plant new trees. Cedar Salem has been it's been known for for greenery and and we need to keep that up. We we know that trees absorb a lot of the carbon. And and we have done a good job, but we still need to do that. And we need to work with our legislators and state representatives on getting incentives to to. For to the city to to be more more proactive in battling climate change.
Thank you very much, Counselor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and in looking at the clock, I'll pass.
I I missed what you said, I'm sorry, Counselor.
Sorry, I have a barking dog also. Just in looking at the clock, I'll pass. I'm good on the questions.
Okay. If we have time left and you have a question, we'll have a few minutes, Counselor Stapleton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thanks you both for coming down and answering all of our questions. I have had lists of questions to ask and all of my other counselors here have been taking my questions. So I too have had all my questions answered.
Okay, do either of you have, Counselor Hoy, did you have anything you'd like to ask that you didn't get a chance to?
I feel like I've got a good, you know, I'm on the project commissions meetings.
Yeah.
Maybe so I've heard it there and here, I think I'm good.
Counselor Nordike?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted us to get clarification on why our third candidate is not here tonight. Do we, city staff, do we have any information as to why we have a no show? That's highly unusual.
The last I heard was late last week and and he had indicated that he would be attending and so I honestly don't know.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Okay. Did anyone have, we've got a couple of minutes, if you had questions that you didn't get to ask that you'd like to, anybody? Okay, well, thank you very much. We'll be taking this up later in the agenda. So we're going to take a few minutes here, we'll take a break and then come back in. Well, let's go ahead, we could go ahead, I guess, and and keep moving. Let me just check. Dan, can we just keep moving? It's not six o'clock. Can we keep going?
You can keep going with questions, that's correct. I mean, we're going to actually vote on the candidates potentially at the council meeting later on.
What about moving forward on like election of council president, things like that? Can we move forward on our rest of our agenda?
Actually, no, because if you actually look at the agenda up above, where where item one is, it says Planning Commission interviews. So the the formal meeting will actually begin at six.
Okay, great. All right, we're going to take a few minute break then. Thank you. Thank you very much, gentlemen, for coming this evening. We look forward to discussing this further. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Welcome back. We're resuming our regular city council meeting agenda for Monday, January 10. We have completed our interviews for the planning commission and we'll be moving on now. Councillor Hoy, why don't we check in just for a second? I'm going to have the recorder call a roll just to make sure who's here.
Councillor Stapleton.
I'm here.
Councillor Anderson.
Likewise.
Councillor Phillips.
Here.
Councillor Leung.
Here.
Councillor Gonzalez.
Here.
Councillor Hoy.
Here.
Councillor Nordike. Councillor Lewis.
Here.
And back to Councillor Nordike. Mayor Bennett.
Here. And as you know, Nordike has been here throughout the earlier part of the meeting. I assume she's just away from her desk right at the moment. Okay, we need additions or deletions to the agenda. Councillor Hoy? Whoops, wait a minute. Okay, back, back for a second. We're going to elect the council president, I'm sorry. So this is the point at which we elect the council president, who's going to nominate the next leader here. Councillor Phillips.
I, sorry, Virginia, I didn't know you were going to do it too. So I'm thrilled and honored to be able to nominate Chris Hoy, our current, our last year's city council president. I think he is the smart, dedicated leader that our city needs at this moment. So I strongly submit his name. Thank you.
Thank you. And the second comes from?
I'll second that.
Councillor Stapleton. Okay, any discussion? Are there any other nominations? Okay. Any, any discussion? Okay, with the recorder, please call a roll.
Councillor Stapleton.
Aye.
Councillor Anderson.
Aye.
Councillor Phillips.
Aye.
Councillor Leung.
Aye.
Councillor Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councillor Hoy.
Aye.
Councillor Nordike.
Aye.
Councillor Lewis.
Aye.
Mayor Bennett.
I don't vote on this one. This is the council's election. Okay. Okay, any additions or deletions, Councillor Hoy?
No, but I would make a motion to reorder the agenda and move item 5A to item 1.5.
I'll second that.
Okay. Want to order if I may, Mr. Mayor, I believe next on the agenda is the appointment of the planning commission members.
5A is the said core, this is what I've got, okay, under special orders of business is the said core update. Is it, has it been replaced by planning commission? I don't always get the latest version of this thing.
Well, the agenda I'm looking at, we're following it so far. We elected the council president and then on the very bottom page one, it says 1.1, planning commission appointments.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Hmm, did I just pass over it, Mr. Hatcherson?
Yes, I think it's the next item up.
Okay, I apologize. Okay, Councillor Anderson.
Yeah, before we vote, I'd like to make a motion to postpone this until the two meetings, two council meetings from now. And here's the reason why. This is the, oh, I make that motion and then I can talk about the motion after it's seconded.
Okay.
Second.
Councillor Hoy seconds.
Here's the reason why. The mayor and I and Councillor Hoy and I think Councillor Stapleton or Councillor Lewis, all these committees get all mixed up, but we're on the boards and commission and this is the planning commission committee or planning commission is the most important subcommittee of the city council. And we had, we had many applicants and originally we narrowed it down to three and unfortunately we only had two people were here and we don't know why the third candidate wasn't here and there's two positions to fill. And so I would like to to give an opportunity to see if Mr., I think his name is Bierra or some, you know, we could have another candidate at some point. Because otherwise we just appoint two people who are here to two positions. And I think we, this is a big enough thing that we need to consider more candidates for.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, if the recorder could please call a roll.
Councillor Anderson.
Aye.
Councillor Phillips.
Aye.
Councillor Leung.
Aye.
Councillor Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councillor Hoy.
Aye.
Councillor Nordike.
Aye.
Councillor Lewis.
Aye.
Councillor Stapleton.
Aye.
Mayor Bennett.
Aye. Okay, the motion passes. We will talk about this in a couple of meetings then. Thank you, Councillor Anderson. Okay, we're back to the, did we vote on the reorganization of the agenda? Okay, that motion, would you restate that, Councillor Hoy? We'll get that back on the table.
Certainly. I move we reorder the agenda to move item 5.8 to item 1.5.
Second.
Second by Anderson. Okay, any discussion? Okay, if the recorder please call a roll.
Councillor Phillips.
Aye.
Councillor Leung.
Aye.
Councillor Gonzalez. Councillor Hoy.
Aye.
Councillor Nordike.
Aye.
Councillor Lewis.
Aye.
Councillor Stapleton.
Aye.
Councillor Anderson.
Aye.
I'll go back to Councillor Gonzalez. Mayor Bennett.
Aye. Okay, motion passes. Okay, we'll move on then to councillor and city manager comment. Councillor Phillips.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Bennett. You know, it's good to see all of you, my colleagues here and staff after, you know, the starting of a new year. I was, I was really hoping to have a different, you know, theme this year, but I, you know, I can't help but comment on where we're at, you know, in the pandemic and what has been nearly two years. Over 1% of all Oregonians got COVID last week, in the last seven days. We had nearly 1,000 people per day getting COVID. So, I mean, I just, I can't, you know, say anything new, you know, avoid large group gatherings, wear a mask when you're out of your private residence and indoors. And, you know, if you haven't gotten vaccinated, get vaccinated. If you've been vaccinated but not yet, get boosted, get boosted. These things will, you know, protect you, your family, your community members. They'll keep all of us safe. You know, it's a real difficult time right now in healthcare across our country. I was doing continuing medical education a few days ago and it's kind of widely thought that about 20% of healthcare workers have quit working, have quit the workforce, you know, in the last year and a half. So, you know, it's just really tough everywhere. Now is not a great time to get sick. I mean, if you are experiencing an unstable condition or serious symptoms, please come into the hospital and go to your doctor like you're supposed to, but it's just, it's a really tough time right now for those of us on the front line. So anything you can do is helpful. So, you know, just unplugging those things again, in a different vein. I didn't realize how bad this was until a couple of weeks ago. We have a critical shortage of blood products in this country. I donated like in the middle of December and the staff were asking me like, how are things in the hospital? And I just don't think it had hit yet. So, you know, if you can go donate, if your time is up, like where it's been over eight or nine weeks or whatever, you know, get in, donate, you know, we need the help there too.
Great. Thank you very much, Councillor. Councillor Leung.
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to echo a little bit from Councillor Phillips. I don't know if anyone's taken a look at the numbers to date, especially for COVID-19. On Friday, there was over 10,000 cases. In today's report, which consists of the three day period from, so January 7th to January 9th, there are now 18,538 new COVID cases or on average about 9,000 cases per day. In addition, there were 18 additional deaths, increasing Oregon's death toll to now 5,779 cases. And I also asked specifically what Marion County's rates was. So of that 18,538 for the weekend, 1,366 cases were from Marion County alone. I don't know what else to say at this point. I mean, Omnicron is a new variant and we're still seeing our hospitals filled with COVID-19 positive cases. I cannot plead enough for, if you're able to, please get vaccinated, whether it's your first shot or your booster at this point. And even if you're not able to, take the necessary precautions. Now, I work for a nonprofit and we're still seeing rates increase even within our own community. Please protect yourself, your family and others by doing what you, what we need to do and be responsible. On Saturday, my organization had another outreach event that we've been doing on a monthly basis. We had a total of 72 households or about 327 individuals. We provided COVID-19 vaccines, the, for the pediatrics, whether it's a first shot or the booster, food boxes, as well as information and resources, notary services, OHP, Medicaid enrollment. We had 41 people come and receive the vaccine, of which 31 of those individuals received the booster, four who received their first dose and six who received their second dose. And also want to remind people that there's many places that they can go to get the vaccine, places to search for specifically in Marion County could be from the Marion County Health and Human Services webpage. For example, the booster, which I got over on the holiday break, I went to the Oregon Health Authority warehouse, which is a pretty much a big empty building in the, on, off of Hamzville, Hamzville Highway. And they are still doing vaccines there almost on a daily basis. And but I understand their last day at this moment is January 14th. The Salem Center, at the Salem Center Mall, they are still doing vaccines as well. So there's still places to go get your vaccine. So please look that information up. If you don't know where, please feel free to email me or any other councils, even the city staff, and I'm sure they could help you find a place to go get your vaccine. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councillor Hoy.
Just going to stick with this theme for a moment, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I received an email from the, from Salem Health Day in my other capacity. And they currently have 84 COVID patients in the hospital. Of those 10 are in the ICU and three are on ventilators and 49 of those are unvaccinated. And their capacity of licensed beds is 494. There are 516 people in the hospital. That's a problem. So it's going to, it doesn't, it's not just about COVID, but it's about all of our other health needs. And so like my colleagues have said, please get vaccinated. Please wear your mask, do all the things that we need to be doing so we can end this thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Stapleton.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Um, I actually have some really great news to share. I know it's a hard turn, but I will help bridge this by saying this last week, I was able to take my kiddo, my 12-year-old in for her booster and which we were just waiting on because she was the one who was the most at risk. And so we were able to go down to the Salem Center Mall and get her booster this past week and I was very, very thankful. While we were waiting in the very short line, we were only there for like 15 minutes from start to finish. There was two adults that came in and they were filling out their paperwork for their first vaccine and I got all teary. I was like standing over there crying and my daughter is just like rolling her eyes because it's just, it's so important and I, and I value so much the folks who are making that hard decision for them to come in now and get vaccinated. It just means a lot to me as a member of our community to see folks taking that step. So it was a great day for us. And I wanted to start off by saying that, that it's, it's really important to share good news. And this may seem like really far outside of city politics and it is, but it's important to me and I'm your city councillor. So on January 3rd, 2022, we had a joint statement and I want to emphasize the word joint because it was from the People's Republic of China, the French Republic, the Russian Federation, the United Kingdom of Great Britain and Northern Ireland and the United States of America. And this statement was about preventing nuclear war and avoiding an arms race. In the statement, they said, "We consider the avoidance of war between nuclear weapon states and the reduction of strategic risks as our foremost responsibilities. We affirm that a nuclear war cannot be won and must never be fought." And for me, that was a beautiful thing to see in the news where we have so much negative news that this such really important work is happening. And as I'm sure you all remember, the last time that we really had some big movement on this issue was back in 2017, when 120 nations signed a treaty that banned nuclear weapons and that effort was led by Austria, Brazil, Mexico, South Africa and New Zealand. And I believe that someday we will live in a world without nuclear weapons and I'm thrilled to see any movement in this direction. Now, a little closer to home, I wanted to talk about the library and how they have partnered just recently with Shametah Community College. And they're teaming up to offer a series of free workshops and those are focused on supporting our community resiliency in the face of COVID-19. And they will be presented by Shametah faculty and staff and these workshops are an hour long and will be delivered via Zoom. And there's so many great things on here. I was thinking about Councillor Anderson when they had one on collecting and caring for your art collection at home. Tom, might be something fun. For me, planting a veg garden, running online meetings like a pro or mystifying the job search, nutrition for families and gardening for mental health, understanding big tree and big T and little T trauma. All these are fantastic and the list goes on. And I really encourage everybody to go online and register for these. They do start at the end of January and run through March. So I love all of that continuing education in our communities and the way that our public library is reaching out to folks at home in this time of need. So thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Councillor Nordike.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, one and all. And thank you to all my colleagues for your remarks. I always look forward to hearing from you since this is really the only way in which we can interact these days. So it's always great to see you, even if it is by Zoom yet again. I have three quick updates to share with you all tonight. Oh, good, my dog just left the room. So I'm less likely to have a dog bomb than Councillor Hoy tonight. So first, I recently conducted a tour of our brand new YMCA building. You probably have seen that building under construction in downtown Salem. This is a very exciting development for Salem. My social media intern was on the scene videotaping me as I dodged enormous puddles and other construction site hazards. It was freezing cold, I might add, but it was absolutely worth it because I know that when the YMCA is done, this is going to be a community hub. It will provide childcare, it will provide services for people regardless of their ability to pay, an opportunity for multiple generations of families to get together and share in Y services. I'm really, really excited for all the changes that are afoot at the Y. And if you would like to find out more about where we are at with the YMCA construction or if you would like to support their capital campaign because they are this close to opening the building debt-free, go to theyonline.org. Second point I'd like to make is the annual point in time count. Every year, our community comes together to identify the number of persons experiencing homelessness through the point in time count. This isn't just done here in Salem. This is done across the nation. The PIT is crucial to reaching people in need, collecting data so we can make data-driven decisions and ultimately securing federal funding. Because the more people you count, the more federal funding you receive. It's very similar to the census in that sense. So I recently sat down with Robert Marshall. He's program manager at Community Action Arches Project. And you can find the entire video on my Facebook page, Salem City Councillor Vanessa Nordike. And Robert really shares a lot of expertise about why the PIT is so crucial and how you can help. But I think your first question probably is, what day is the PIT count? And we're actually doing it over the course of three days, January 25, 26 and 29. So if you're interested in volunteering and signing up for a shift, you can go to my Facebook page where I posted all the links. The final thing I will share about the PIT is what Robert was able to tell me about last year's PIT count. The count from last year counted 1,117 individuals experiencing homelessness in our area. And that includes a lot of children and that includes a lot of young adults. Also, about 20% of the 1,117 surveyed self-reported having a serious mental illness. Now, when I asked Robert, 1,100 people? That seems a little low to me based on what I've heard and what I've seen myself volunteering in the community. And he agrees. We do believe this is a lower number. It's difficult, frankly, during the pandemic to get enough volunteers who are willing to go out in the cold, rain or shine, to work with individuals experiencing homelessness, which is why this push for volunteers is so crucial and why I'm using this platform here to bang the gong on their behalf. So please check it out and please find a way to donate or volunteer or otherwise support this year's point in time count. And then last but not least, on the agenda tonight is a motion that I'm bringing to council. And folks have already heard me speak about all the reasons why I support a mobile crisis unit. But I just want to share with you briefly two reasons why other people think we should have this unit. One person wrote in the extensive testimony you received tonight, quote, "My nephew, now retired from the Eugene PD, said the Kahoots program there was an excellent resource," end quote. Kahoots, of course, being the mobile crisis unit we have in our sister city Eugene. And the final piece of testimony I'll point out, this person wrote, "I lived in Eugene for over 30 years and saw the good that the Kahoots team accomplished time and time again. Its teams of medical and behavioral professionals were able to attend to the needs of clients in the community, freeing the Eugene Police Department to deal with other more critical and violent issues. The Kahoots team had a solid reputation, Eugene, and city officials, as well as law enforcement officials, were gratified that the Kahoots team was on call when needed, year in and year out. Money was saved as were lives," end quote. So that's all I have for now, but Happy New Year, one and all. Let's make 2022 better.
Thank you. Mr. Powers.
Thank you, Mayor Bennett. First, congratulations to Councillor Hoy. Thank you for his willingness to continue to lead council. It's an important role and, and I know staff looks forward to continuing to work with you, Councillor Hoy, Council President Hoy. I also, I want to agree with Councillors Hoy, Phillips and Leung regarding COVID. As I am sitting home after testing positive, it is everywhere and the more we can do to take precautions, the better off our community will be. On tonight's agenda is an information report on the city's plans for citing micro villages to shelter some of the estimated 1,000 unhoused residents in Salem. In addition to the efforts to provide shelter, our work continues on moving individuals who are sheltering in areas that are unacceptable to the community and on cleaning up the waste left behind by some who are unhoused. The work is slow for humanitarian reasons, legal reasons and operational reasons, but the work does continue. Work continues on two recent Salem revised code issues. Council will be updated as the tree and sign cases proceed. The city's public works, police, fire and communications teams did an admirable job during the recent winter weather. Sewage overflow was kept to the shortest duration possible considering the amount of rain. Streets were prepped for snow and ice considering the city's limited snow removal resources. And the public was kept safe when specific areas such as River Road South became dangerous. I'd also like to thank the community volunteers, churches, chariots, UGM, Safe Sleep and Community Action for providing overnight shelters and transportation during our recent extreme cold. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. See anyone else? We will then Let's see anyone else. We will then um move on to item five A. This is a report from Sedcor, and I'm not sure who's uh doing this.
We have Eric Anderson, yes. Uh, I don't, I don't know if, sorry, Mayor, I'm not sure if Kristen Rutherford was able to join us tonight or not. But as as I think many of you know, uh, Sedcor is our economic development partner, working closely with our urban development department and staff, and provides our our regional uh economic development efforts. And we do have uh Mr. Eric Anderson, the executive director, there's Kristen, our executive, the executive director uh of 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 Sedcor with us this evening. And and thank you uh for reordering the agenda.
You bet. Well, Eric, please uh, please go ahead. You and Kristen can work off each other and give us the report. Thank you very much for being here this evening.
Oh, thank you, Mayor Bennett and council members, and thank you for your time tonight. Uh, I'm Eric Anderson with uh Sedcor, the Strategic Economic Development Corporation. Share my screen here because I have some uh. Oh, that didn't work. I guess I'm not.
We can see your screen.
Oh, you can. Oh, perfect. Okay, I can't. Um, thank you. Um, so this is our stated mission. Um. Now we're. This is our stated mission. Um, but we also have an informal motto at Sedcor, "I know a guy," or "I know a gal," which is reflects our ability to make connections with the right uh resources for growing businesses. Twenty twenty-two will be our fortieth anniversary year, and we're appreciative of the support and partnership we have from the city. And I'd like to especially thank Mayor Bennett and city manager Powers for their leadership involvement with the organization. In the past couple of years, we've added some significant initiatives to our work plan. Through launch Mid Valley, we partner with the city and other organizations to provide resources to help entrepreneurs scale up their businesses. Our venture catalyst, Mike Whites, uh sponsors Pub Talks Business Plan Bootcamps, and even launched our first seed fund for businesses. Sedcor also unveiled our Northwest Ag Innovation Hub to recognize the importance of agriculture and its supply chain in our regional economy, working with the Technology Association of Oregon and other partners. We work closely with Andy Gorski and the economic development team in the city's urban development department on outreach to our major employers. Here's just a few of the projects that resulted from that outreach. Uh, Shinsegae Foods, formerly Chengtu, is a Korean food manufacturer about to open its doors on a major expansion of its Salem facility. You've probably seen it on the Salem, uh off the Salem Parkway. This project will allow the company to grow and sell their project, uh products through national retailers like Costco. We've helped them to find local sources of meats and vegetables for their products, along with packaging, branding, and other resources. Yamasa International is a Salem soy sauce manufacturer that was looking for a local source of red wheat, something that's not grown in this area. But they wanted to try to cut transportation costs and time, money, and carbon that they spent to bring it in. Sedcor connected them with Rudenclough Farms of Yanhill County, and after a year of a test plot, they uh now grows one hundred acres of red wheat for Yamasa. And the company's expanding its production capacity this year, so even more soy sauce made here in Salem with uh local wheat will be on store shelves. Finally, Watershed, Salem rain gear manufacturer, is one of several businesses in the region that pivoted at the start of the pandemic to meet emerging needs for personal protection equipment, producing gowns for the region's hospitals. Sedcor developed an online database of local PPE manufacturers to promote their products and help them to get in the loop with state procurement and emergency management offices. Sedcor works with the city to market the Mill Creek Corporate Center and respond to business prospects. We receive requests from partners like Business Oregon or directly from a network of site selectors for companies looking to locate or expand in the region. We've seen activity with a variety of industries, but logistics seems to be the most active, as exemplified by Amazon, which recently announced its third project in Marion County. We're working with two other national-scale businesses finalizing projects at Mill Creek, one with uh PAC Trust and one with the Skanel uh Properties. The city contracts with Sedcor to manage the enterprise zone program as well. We work with Marion and Polk County assessors to be sure the projects meet the program requirements and the necessary paperwork is submitted, including annual reporting. The product, the program has helped a variety of businesses like Garmin and Don Pancho over the years as they've expanded with job creating projects and investments. We've also begun the application process in two, twenty twenty-one for three new companies uh whose investments will be creating an estimated total of more than three hundred and fifty jobs in the community. Recent projects like Am- Amazon have certainly put Salem on the map with the commercial development community. Early investors in the market like PAC Trust and Capstone have seen their projects take shape and attract investment, drawing new entrants to the Salem market like Skanel and Pacific Northwest Properties. With all this activity, the amount of available project-ready industrial land for future development is becoming limited. Uh, not just in Salem and Mill Creek, uh large, long vacant sites in Independence and Dallas have also recently attracted investment. We hear a lot about supply chain issues. Uh, Sedcor has prioritized working with businesses to to develop their local sources of supply. On our website, we feature two videos that show the extent of economic impact of hops and grapes that are grown in the region and how they touch so many other industries. Shortly, we'll be launching an online resource to match food and beverage processors with growers in the region. The Sedcor team is currently working with employers to address issues like workforce housing and daycare resources to help retain and attract workers. We're becoming much more aware of those types of issues and who we have to bring to the table to uh help provide resources to make those kinds of projects happen, and that's all work that's consistent with the city's economic development strategy. We're excited about working with the city uh to begin long-term assessment of where future development might occur in Salem. It's not just about land being available, transportation access, wetlands, and other environmental concerns, environmental um infrastructure capacity are all major aspects of project-ready land. We're currently awaiting word from Business Oregon on an application Sedcor submitted on behalf of a coalition, which includes the Latino Business Alliance, Advanced Economic Solutions, and the Schmeckata Small Business Development Center. If successful, we'll have the resources to offer culturally and linguistically appropriate training and counseling to underserved small businesses and entrepreneurs in the region. And we'll be working with the Oregon Entrepreneurs Network to shore up our funding for our venture catalyst and launch our next round of the Mid Valley Angel Fund in two thousand twenty-two. We need to identify sources of funding so we can have a sustainable venture catalyst program and have that going offered for the region uh long into the future. I look forward to answering, sorry for the rush. Um, this was like a twenty-minute presentation when I did my first run, so a little bit of editing was involved. Um, but happy to answer any questions. And once again, thank you for your support and engagement and for your time tonight.
Very good. Thank you very much, Eric. Uh, Kristen, did you have anything you wanted to add? Uh.
I don't. Um, I would just like to free up the time for any questions that council may have for Eric.
Great. Are there any questions for Eric? Yes, uh, councillor Gonzalez.
Thanks, Mayor, and thank you, Eric. You know, um, there was a survey. I can find it, but Salem was one of the least affordable places for college students. I mean, top, like bottom five. Um, as you start recruiting, as these businesses are reaching out to Salem or region, what are the reasons they're passing Salem, passing on this?
Um, very good question. Um, you know, there's a a variety of reasons. You know, obviously, the the pandemic slowed down a lot of projects that we were working on in the past. But what we've been hearing more recently has been, um, you know, really just looking kind of where, for logistics firms at least, they've been, they've got their own sort of uh equations, so they identify specific pinpoint locations where, you know, they may say Woodburn is an opportunity and not Salem, or they see Portland as an opportunity and and not Wilsonville. Um, the other thing that we have heard in the past is there's just been, um, you know, a lot of the issues that have been happening in Portland, um, you know, particularly last year. Um, some of the way the national news handled that, um, the further you get away from Oregon, the more people equate Portland with Oregon. Um, so we did find ourselves in a position where we basically, you know, suggested to the state to really start promoting this uh state as a uh, the I-five corridor and and the I-eight-four corridor is a lot of different resources in addition to Portland. Um, and also, I think a lot of the Portland issues were kind of overstated as well, and we're starting to see investment trickle in from Portland as well now.
Anyone else? Well, great work, Eric. Thank you very much. Uh, it's very exciting. I always look forward to hearing from you on uh what you all are seeing and doing, so.
Thank you, Mayor, and if any of the council members have any follow-up questions, please uh feel free to reach out to me and uh look forward to uh answering questions in the future.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on then to uh public comment for on issues on the agenda but not subject to public hearings. So I'll begin with Dylan McDowell. You'll have three minutes. Uh, please keep track of the time. If you see it hit three, please know the next voice you hear is me saying, "Stop talking." Thank you, Dylan. Go ahead.
Understood. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, Mayor, council, and Happy New Year to all of you. Um, for those I don't know, I'm Dylan McDowell. I'm chair of the Salem Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, SBRAB. Uh, your packet tonight included SBRAB's annual report, and as is customary, I wanted to come and just highlight a couple points for you all to let you know what we've been doing for the last year. A notable project this last year for us was the subcommittee creating recommendations on park usage and permitting, and a big kudos to councillor Nordike for initiating that project. This really allowed us to engage with the community in new ways and provide ideas for improving the park system, many of which I know are are being considered and hopefully uh will be adopted soon. We also had a tree subcommittee that was active before the pandemic, and that informed a community tree survey that just completed. You may have have heard about this as well. And the hope there is to expand to us the tree canopy cover in Salem, especially trees on privately owned property. As SBRAB, we endorsed three master plans throughout the year, and we also provided recommendations for quality projects and proposals from both city staff and some of our key partners like Mission Street Parks Conservancy. We've written several support letters, especially as we're now in a digital age, and just having that vote sheet is is one thing. But writing a letter has been really helpful for us to help accompany grant requests for both the city especially in the hopes that more projects get funded and we have more money coming in to support our great park system here in Salem. We're excited to have SBRAB be really active with different community groups as well. Um, so I served on the Climate Action Task Force as a representative of SBRAB, and we also have a member currently serving on the Library Strategic Plan Committee. Throughout all this, I do want to give a big shout out to the city staff that most of what you see in this report, so many things, everything from softball to owl prowls to other programs, that they've done a tremendous job keeping things running in the city despite the pandemic conditions we're in. And they've also done a really good job of making sure that we, as a board, are very well-informed and and thriving in this virtual setting. The last thing I wanted to let you all know is that we have a couple new members joining the board soon. Uh, we'll find, I think they'll join us in the next month or so, so I encourage you all to to get to know them. And also that we have term limits on our chair role, so I've served as chair for two years now. Um, so I will be transitioning out of the chair role. However, I was just reappointed for my second three-year term on SBRAB, so I'm excited to stay engaged as always and make sure I can uh continue to help improve Salem's park and recreation. With that, I'm happy to stop and answer any questions, and I see Tom's hand is raised, councillor Anderson's.
Councillor Anderson, yeah, go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, um, this is an excellent report, uh, Dylan, I really uh you've done on the other commissions that you just discussed, by you, I mean SBRAB. Um, and I'm just pointing this out to the council because budget season is coming up, and I'm looking at pages two and four of your report where you make some recommendations about increasing park maintenance staff, uh providing additional park rangers and police coverage, um, uh park development uh and upgrades, maybe in the potential, including the potential bond measure. And um, you know, I'm not, council, we're not going to make any of these decisions now, but I think this is something that uh w- we will need to look at again in the budget cycle a- as it's coming up. And so I invite your and your board's participation in the uh budget cycle. And again, thank you very much for your hard work and thank the rest of SBRAB for me.
Thank you so much, councillor. I really appreciate that, and we will make sure to take you up on that. And I think as we've all seen with COVID, just the importance of the outdoor spaces. And we're so lucky here in Salem to have a wealth of res- of outdoor resources and make sure that they're always in good shape and expanding.
Anyone else? Thank you very much, Mr. McDowell. Appreciate all the work.
Mister Mayor, councillor Nordike, she's got her hand up.
Where'd she go? There she, I don't see her. There she is, I'm sorry.
No worries.
And Vanessa.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Mr. McDowell, thank you so much, first of all, for your leadership. You have been really great to work with, and I so appreciate all of the work that you guys do every year. And on top of all of that, we handed a pretty novel motion to you to take a deep dive into best practices for our parks. And I know our city manager will be updating us on that in the near future, but I really want to extend my gratitude to you and the entire team at SBRAB for getting those recommendations into us. Now, I do have a question about your report. I appreciate its thoroughness. Um, as you know, the city of Salem has an embarrassment of riches when it comes to parks. We have a lot of them. And I can see that you've made some recommendations for where to upgrade or replace park amenities. Uh, how do you decide uh which park amenities need to be triaged, so to speak, for upgrades, replacements, uh refurbishments, things like that? Can you describe in a nutshell what the process is that SBRAB follows? And are you, I'm particularly interested in knowing whether you're using a data-driven approach for identifying which parks are getting, should be slated for improvements?
That's a really good question. Um, I will, I will be happy to follow up with you and make sure that the city staff, like Jennifer Keller, for example, who does a lot of that data, can can get that to you. I know that from the conversations we've had, there's a lot of emphasis on making sure the full city is served. And if there's certain areas, um, it's so high usage is a big consideration, but really thinking about the length of parks, uh mast, when there was last updates, making sure different parts of different wards are served. I know that there's a great setup or a great list of of master plans that are in process. And so as part of that, looking at the amenities that we offer, so between the Spiff, the Spiff Grants, the Salem Park Improvement Fund, the Salem, the Salem Parks Foundation Funding, making sure that there's opportunities to fund as many parks across the city as possible. Um, I do know that equity is a conversation or a um consideration that's been taken into account more and more recently, which has been wonderful, and that was something we talked about this last year with some of the parks that were prioritized. Um, so I'm happy to follow up with you more on some of that specific criteria.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. McDowell, for coming down and all the fine work that you you do on this SBRAB. I guess one thing that you just said there caught my attention, um, kind of following up to councillor Nordike. When we use high utilization as a metric in determining where to put our resources, it automatically eliminates areas of the city that are underdeveloped.
Yeah.
Because if it's an underdeveloped area in terms of parks, it's naturally underutilized because it's not attractive for people. So I would, I would invite you out to my area of Salem, East Salem, where we we are, we don't have an embarrassment of riches when it comes to parks. We have some nice parks, don't get me wrong. But uh, we're, it's, we don't have a lot of, uh, we have a dog park for several miles. We, there are lots of things we don't have here. Now, I know that Gear Park's going to help us with that when it gets redeveloped, but I would just encourage you to really take a look at that whole equity situation in terms of the geography and um other aspects of the city. Thank you.
Thank you, council president. If I may respond real fast, I just want to say that I I may have misspoken in that, and I do want to make sure to get clarification from city staff in terms of exactly that. I know that in some cases, if it's something like um bike racks or something, there's the the usage aspects that do go into that. But in terms of where to invest in select parks, there's been a big emphasis on trying to make sure we can serve the whole city. And I know especially in your ward and in East Salem, there's a big opportunity there for us to increase access to parks. And in many cases, like some of one of the projects, we wrote a letter for in the last two years, I believe, was around really just making sure there are sidewalks to get to some of the parks, and and the connectivity piece of that is huge. And I think as we look at the R-Salem Plan, the Climate Action Plan, um, and all of our different community elements with Chariot's Long Range Plan as well, there's just a really great opportunity to make sure we have our green space spread across the city and everyone can get to all those different areas.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, councillor Gonzalez.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Dylan, for all your efforts. It's um been a pleasure working with you. And but also, I I would say in addition to what uh coun- council president Hoy mentioned, you know, some of, one of the things I didn't really see mention, at least in this highlights, and I'm sure you can get back to us with some more details. But for example, um, but let's take equity, but let's take a little further. In this case, Northgate Neighborhood Park. It's truly a matter of their activities there is more a ladder of life and death. You know, there's a young fellow that was killed there, and then the community sort of rallied behind it. And um, and so the the need there is a little different. You know, they're trying to um build community around that park for the actual safety, not just recreation, this is actual safeties. So as we're looking forward, you know, uh, physical safety, uh, uh, family-type events, that's what's going to push away the graffiti and the gangs and the gang activity. Um, so, you know, I I haven't seen that lately in the reports, but maybe we can start uh looking at that too, because that's the concern I hear from the neighborhood associations. So, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. Same like second, the the similar. Second, the similar issue that hit at Inglewood Park, you know, it's something I hope, I think that call for maybe a public safety component to your discussions would be very helpful unless you've already done it. And I'm, I think that's a really important part of what's happening out there.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor and members of council. I agree with that completely. I think that's really good feedback, both for the report and just in general for our conversation. So I'll make sure to take that back to SPRAB. And I know that one of the recommendations we've talked about too is the hope of eventually having more park rangers that can help with some of that in terms of community engagement. And, you know, we have an incredible park ranger right now who's stretched relatively thin. And so I think adding more resources there as we continue to build out our park system will be great. But I think in terms of how we present the information too, this is something we should put more front and center. So I appreciate that feedback.
Great, thank you very much. Anyone else? All right, thank you, Mr. McDowell. Again, thank you for all the work you all are doing on SPRAB. We're very, very pleased with what's happening. Todd Spencer. Todd, speaking on 5D.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Bennett, Council. I'm Spencer Todd, actually.
Oh, okay.
That's all right. It's, you're not the first, you're not the last.
Well, that's how they write it up.
Well, that's my email address, my fault.
Ah, okay.
Just briefly, for those of you that don't know me, my name is Spencer Todd. I'm a lawyer here in town. For the past eight years, I've been working as a defense attorney focused on court-appointed indigent defense. I'm now running for Marion County District Attorney because I believe we need improved leadership when it comes to the important public safety issues of our day, especially with regard to homelessness. And I want to briefly speak in favor of a mobile crisis response pilot program that does not involve law enforcement, which is the agenda item 5D that was just mentioned. Just briefly, when talking about a new program, I think that there are two important questions. What will it cost and do we really need it? And in this case, there's already funding on the table provided by the legislature in the last session. All Marion County has to do is apply for that funding. So the program won't, will not create any additional costs for taxpayers in Salem or for taxpayers in Marion County. And in fact, it would likely save us money. The CAHOOTS program, which is what this is essentially modeled after, or something like this would end up looking like, a non-response or a non-law enforcement-related response to mental health crises. CAHOOTS is the Eugene Springfield program that Councilor Nordike mentioned earlier, and it estimates an $8 million savings every year for Eugene and Springfield. There is also a clear need for this program in Marion County and especially specifically in Salem. According to December 2021, it's a little periodical that the Marion County Commissioners send out Marion County today. They mentioned that in 2021, there were an estimated 850 contacts that the Marion County Crisis Response Team had with individuals throughout the county. And that wasn't because they only received 850 calls. That was because the Mobile Crisis Response and the Community Crisis Follow-Up Team are small and resources are extremely limited. So it's paid for and we definitely need it, but it also kind of has a public safety component to it. So whenever I'm thinking about a program like that, I want to think about, you know, law enforcement. What is law enforcement's perspective on something like this? And unsurprisingly, law enforcement is in favor of a program like this. Artisheer Tobrizian's January 6th article in the Salem Reporter cites Lieutenant Debbie Aguilar, who's the Salem Police Department spokesperson, and she said that Salem Police Department would support a non-police response option, much like what Councilor Nordike mentioned from the public comment. So the program will work. It'll save us money and it will help law enforcement keep us safe. But beyond all of those things, it is the right thing to do. Of the 34 public comments that were provided prior to the hearing, all of them were in favor of the program. And many of the commenters mentioned specifically siblings, parents, and friends that have had mental health crises. This isn't just a tent in the park. These are members of our community. These are our neighbors. And yeah, this program won't solve the homeless crisis single-handedly, but is a step in the right direction. And it's a step that we must take if we want to craft lasting solutions. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Missing, did I, nope, Noel Hall.
Hi, it's Noel, just like Christmas.
Go ahead, Noel. I'm sorry, you're speaking on 6A, right?
Yes, correct. So my name is Noel Hall, and I work at the city of Salem and have concerns regarding the proposed micro-village at Peace Plaza, item 6A on the agenda. It is important to know that my concerns are not going against provisions for unsheltered neighbors, but rather seeking a wiser choice of placement and that the city remains equitable, not only for its employees, but for the community we serve, and that we remain cognitive of any barriers a micro-village at this location might impose. The unsheltered community needs assistance, but we have responsibility at the city to keep employees and those accessing services safe, as equity includes both employees and community members, and not to create any additional barriers or deterrents for access to those services. Some of these services we provide have no online access, such as court and the library. Technically, with the library, people could stop using it, but is that a goal we really want? We can't ignore the fact that the village will likely attract loitering and that some of these micro-village guests may have criminal backgrounds, therefore creating an unsafe barrier. Already, there's been increased civic and loitering, vandalism, littering, and vehicle break-ins. A city employee was attacked as close as Pringle Parkade and only a few months ago, and an sheltered guest was sitting in a fellow employee's car. The city needs to be preventative here and not reactive. I understand the organizations running the village are putting things in place to minimize potential problems, but it only takes one person, one time. And is that a risk the city is willing to take at a place where we are serving the whole community? Microvillages are being presented as a solution for the homelessness crisis, and we have seen success at the Portland Road location, but no barriers were created regarding public services. As an employee, I am concerned we're not only creating a deterrent, but also an unsafe environment. The moment a community member steps onto the civic campus, they should feel safe and welcome. And I believe it is a basic worker's right to have a safe and equitable work campus and work conditions. I encourage you to also consider that peace, that the Peace Plaza location would act as a fishbowl for this village, leading to a lack of privacy for the village guests of the second and third floors of the Civic Center and the library will look directly down into it. We need to consider locations that do not create barriers to the community and are equitable for all. Today, I've addressed a small portion of my concerns. Next time, I will propose solutions.
Thank you, Noel. Any questions? Yes, Councilor Hoyt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for your testimony, Ms. Hall. Have you, have you visited one of our managed micro-shelter communities?
I have not. I've seen pictures and I've heard the pastors and members of the organization speak on them. And I've read the material and information regarding the micro-villages.
Thank you. So I appreciate, I appreciate the, what I, what I believe is probably the the genuine, good-hearted concern behind your words. But I want to toss out some alternative ideas to you. I'm concerned about the use of your language as it relates. It almost seemed like you were dehumanizing people who happened to be homeless. You equated the attack in the, at one of the parking structures with the same as somebody who would be in one of these micro-shelter communities. Those are two very different circumstances. That was a person who was suffering from all sorts of problems, not in a managed situation. They were living in an unmanaged situation with no services around them. That is not what we're talking about with any of those micro-shelter communities. Now, I'm not suggesting that I think Peace Plaza is the best place, or even that this place is going to get approved. But I think it's, it's important to think about these things and think, these are, these are people too. And I agree that our workers need to be safe. Absolutely. I champion safety for our workers always. And would never want to make a decision that put them in harm's way. But I also want to help our community, and this isn't a solution for homeless. It's one of the, it's a piece. It's, when people can't get off the street, when they can't get out of a tent and have a place to put their stuff, they, where it's secure, they can't go to a job, they can't go to a doctor's appointment, they can't go anywhere, because when they do, their stuff gets stolen. And so these micro-shelter communities allow people to actually have a starting point where they can start building out of whatever circumstance existed that caused them to be homeless. And that's what we're trying to do here. We're trying to help people with a leg up and trying to help them improve their situation. It's, this is, this is a huge problem that's going to take the whole community to help solve. And I would just encourage you to rethink your position and your thoughts about people who are homeless. And I understand the fear, but remember, these are individuals and you can't lump them all together. So thank you for your, thank you for coming and testifying with us tonight.
Okay.
Am I allowed to respond at all?
Certainly.
Okay, definitely thank you, and my intent is definitely not to dehumanize. And that's why, you know, it's, I don't want to go against provisions for these people at all because we do need to help our homeless neighbors. There is a fear though, you know, there's been a buildup at kind of City Hall and we're seeing it. And so there is a fear, you know, I'm not sure if you've blocked civic at all, and that's why I have some solutions. You know, if this is going to be there, you know, then let's, let's, you know, champion for some upgraded security measures at civic. And that, you know, that's for our, you know, guests of the village as well. That would protect them. It would protect employees, that would protect community members. Because if you walk civic, it's not the most well-lit place and not, it doesn't feel like a very safe place at times. Especially when you work off hours and you're walking by yourself, and there's a good portion of the year when you're walking in the dark. And so a concern is that it not necessarily be the guests in the village that are, you know, a potential safety threat, but rather people that may come to visit or cause more loitering, as we have seen an increase in loitering at the Civic Center. But I definitely don't want to dehumanize these people as they do need, they need help.
Great. Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay, thank you, Noel. DJ Vincent.
Good evening, Mayor Bennett. Good evening, councilors. Thank you so much for hearing my testimony tonight. Let me start with thanking you all for the support you've provided to Church of the Park and to unsheltered folks this past year, through your direct support of the Safe Parking Network, through the support in championing the micro-shelter communities on Portland Road. And so tonight, I come bearing good news and context for your considering one or more new micro-shelter sites. So reminding everyone that Church of the Park has been doing hope-based navigation since 2007. We were formed to interact with our unsheltered neighbors in a relational way that directs them to their next best step. And we realize, again, the numbers are saying there's a lot of folks who need engaged in a, in a way that is positive towards the next steps. We have these three functioning priorities, collaborative navigation with all other resources in the city, emergency sheltering that moves people on to their next step, and workforce development for those folks that we are engaging. So I come giving you the numbers of what has happened in the past year with a focus on identifying every person as someone who has real goals that just need clarified, and they need real pathways to achieve the life that we're hoping for all Salem citizens. So the micro-shelter community approach is one that we all just tried out in the last year. And with the key pillars of it being safe for guests and the neighborhood, sanitary, where guests have access to services, showers, and supported, where we're bringing in housing, job, and addiction support onsite and directing them with case management to the next steps, we are seeing these kind of results. So nine months of the Village of Hope at the old DMV site, we've served 104 people. Thirty-seven percent of those have exited to a positive destination at the Catholic Community Services Site. We are serving women and families. We've served 87 people in three months. We've actually seen these families moving on very quickly. Seventy-two percent have moved on to a positive destination, again, once they were in a safe, sanitary and supported environment. And I just want to double down on saying this doesn't happen without incredible connection with Arches, with UGM, with Northwest Human Services. We are providing a lot of these folks jobs in connection to other jobs. And this is part of a big COC Homeless Alliance Strategic Plan where people receive outreach, they're moved into managed sites and shelters. And I am out of time, and I'm glad that you're considering new sites.
Thank you, DJ. Yes, Councilor Phillips.
Hey, DJ, it's probably restating the obvious, but when you say that 30%, 37% of people in the first location and 72% of people in the second location go to a positive location, does that mean that they've, they've gotten some version of permanent supportive housing and we've ended homelessness for them? Or where are they at on their journey getting away from homelessness?
Yeah, in that big spectrum that I was sharing, there's permanent supportive housing. There, there's traditional housing, and then there's transitional housing that's more program-intensive. So it may be, you know, connection to addiction recovery. It may be a longer-term program where we're hoping people are going to move on in 30 days.
But those numbers, I mean, just a follow-up comment, if I may, those numbers seem really good. I mean, people, there's a ton of work that goes into serving, you know, this, these, this section of our community, fellow community members. So, you know, knowing the little that I do as an emergency room doctor and someone who served on the Homeless Solutions Task Force a couple of years ago, you know, 37% to 72%, I mean, this seems like an incredibly worthwhile, you know, use of our local resources. I thank you for your, your information tonight and for the work that your, your program's continuing to do.
Councilor Hoyt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, DJ, for coming down and presenting those stats. Like Councilor Phillips said, that they're quite remarkable. So I, I don't know if you, did you hear our last speaker who spoke to us before you?
Yes, I did, and I had the honor of doing a meeting with about 50 staff members connected to the library and 50 folks connected to civic, an incredibly respectful dialogue both ways. And I want to acknowledge, I mean, I could comment on each of the four sites coming before you and talk about the pros and cons, and there is a city report that does that. And I want to say there are challenges with every sighting. And we, as the operator, we're ready to embrace those, hear what the challenges are, and find solutions.
In, in a nutshell, could you just give the council your assessment on the difference between living in an unmanaged situation and a managed situation, and just what that means in real life terms?
Yeah, so again, safety, the, the folks in an unmanaged setting will self-report that they're in hyper vigilance around their own safety, safety of their stuff, how they feel about their physical bodies. They're not getting sleep, and so we're providing them a locked door, a staff watching over them, you know, digital security, so we can follow up on anything that would happen to their person. Sanitation, so we all see, any camp that builds up, it becomes incredible health risk in terms of sanitation and the buildup of trash. And anyone can come and set up a visit to our sites. They are blowing me away with the guests taking responsibility for themselves with encouragement, and our staff having a very sanitary location with showers and toilets. And then the numbers say that our supportive approach and our collaboration with other partners is working, where the, the outreach and the housing specialists can't do a meeting with people out in the mud. They, the outreach is happening to get them connected to sheltering.
Thank you. Great, thank you, DJ. Anyone else? Hi, Jim.
Yeah, thanks, DJ, for coming down. I'll make this real quick because I know we have a work session coming up next week, and hopefully you'll be there to help. My only question right now, because it's nice to see that we have some sites to look at. It's nice to know that we have shelters paid for and can be produced quickly. Which leaves me with one question. Uh, do you have the staffing to move quickly to staff all four of these in a short amount of time?
I will tell you the honest truth. Our team is ready and we've hired the, the managers already and started training them. Where within the next three months, we could get two sites fully operating. And then if you approve all four, I'll get them going by the end of the year.
And I, and I understand one of the, one of the four is going to have to replace the one that closes in May.
That's right.
So there's really three new ones.
If, if you approved all four, that would empower us to, again, like you say, have three total new because we need to transfer one.
Thanks.
Okay. Anyone else? Right, DJ, again, thank you very much. Thank you for the tremendous work you all are doing. Really, really appreciate it. Um, we'll move on then to the consent calendar, Counselor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's approval of the consent calendar with the exception of item three point two A called by Counselor Anderson.
Second. Second by Phillips.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That leaves us with item three point one A, the December thirteenth, twenty twenty-one draft city council minutes. Item three point three A, an intergovernmental agreement with Marion County for improvements to Center Street Northeast. Item three point three B, an intergovernmental agreement with Marion County for improvements in Hayesville Drive Northeast. Item three point three C, a project request to design and construct a short recreational trail section connecting the Skyline Trail to Joplin Court South. And that concludes the consent agenda.
Very good. Any discussion? Okay. The recorder please call a roll.
Counselor Leon.
Aye.
Counselor Gonzalez.
Aye.
Counselor Hoy.
Aye.
Counselor Nordike.
Aye.
Counselor Lewis.
Aye.
Counselor Stapleton.
Aye.
Counselor Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Phillips.
Aye.
Mayor Bennett.
Aye. Okay, motion passes. Let me just run a second here. Okay, we're going to then go to public hearings. I'm going to open, uh, public hearing twenty-two dash one.
The city council will now conduct a public hearing to consider the petitioner initiated annexation of territory located at thirty-four seventy-six to thirty-four eighty Blossom Drive Northeast and adjacent lands and zone change to multiple family residential two for the portion zoned Marion County Urban Transition Five Acres and application of city of Salem RM two zoning for the portion zoned Marion County Multiple Family Residential. The criteria applicable to the decision are SRC two, two hundred sixty point zero six zero C. Testimony, arguments and evidence must be directed toward the applicable criteria or other criteria which the person believes to apply to the decision. Failure to raise the issue prior to the close of the public hearing in person or in writing or failure to provide statements or evidence with sufficient specificity to provide the parties and the city council an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the land use board of appeals on that issue. A similar failure to raise constitutional issues related to proposed conditions of approval precludes an action for damages in circuit court. The hearing will begin with a staff presentation followed by testimony from the following. The applicant is limited to ten minutes. The applicable neighborhood association is limited to five minutes. So if three people are speaking on behalf of the neighborhood association, they will have a combined five minutes. Other interested persons are limited to three minutes and the applicant may have up to seven minutes rebuttal testimony limited to issues raised during the public testimony. Thank you.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilors. I'm Pamela Cole, case manager for the proposed annexation with concurrent zone change. A request that the staff report attachments, presentation and the planning commission's recommendation be entered into the record. The territories proposed for annexation into the city, territory annexed into the city is automatically given the comprehensive plan designation and zoning designation in the city that are equivalent to the applicable county zoning designations that are in table two sixty dash one in Salem Revised Code. Unless the petitioner requests a new comprehensive plan or zone designation or the equivalent city designation in the tables inconsistent with the Salem area comprehensive plan. In this case, the equivalent zoning for the eastern area is RM one zoning or RM two zoning, which is consistent with the multi-family residential comp plan designation. But the equivalent city zoning for the western area would be residential agriculture or single family residential. Those are not consistent with the comprehensive plan. So the petitioner requested RM two zoning, which would allow twelve to twenty-eight dwelling units per acre. The subject properties contiguous to city limits on the west and on the north. Because it's contiguous, annexations required to obtain city services for future development. The territory map and legal description incorporate three point five acres of private property and just attach zero point zero four acres of right of way on Blossom Drive Northeast. The subject property is designated multifamily in the comprehensive plan. Surrounding properties are designated multifamily, commercial and industrial. The Marion County zoning of urban transition five acres applies to the western area. The eastern area of the subject property and abutting properties to the east are zoned Marion County Multiple Family Residential RM. Property to the south is zoned Marion County Commercial Retail Limited Use and also RM, Multiple Family Residential. The areas nearby in the city are zoned Industrial Business Campus and General Industrial. The proposed zone change RM two would apply to that western area of the property. Therefore, the entire property would be RM two upon annexation. The property contains a single family dwelling and accessory buildings. Nearby properties to the northeast and south are occupied by warehouses, single family dwellings, a few triplexes and trailer park village. The abutting property to the west is owned by the Confederated Tribes of the Suletts Indians. And they also own properties west of Astoria Drive Northwest, Northeast. Staff found that the annexation met the criteria, including whether it's consistent with comprehensive plan and statewide planning goals, allows early, efficient and timely provision of urban services and serves the public interest. The planning commission found that the proposed land use designations met their criteria and recommended that council adopt those designations. Their findings are attached in the annexation staff report as well. Northgate Neighborhood Association provided comments saying that they do support the application. They had several questions. Where would the apartments be located? Would they be similar to apartments nearby? How would builders solve parking issues? And for those three questions, we would say that the location, the design and parking would be subject to the development standards at time of submittal. And they asked if staff and the builders would speak at one of their meetings. And of course, we would do that upon request. We have a few other comments from Public Works. And they said that the urban growth area permit would be required and street improvements or right of way dedication would be required when the property is developed. Parks indicated that Hoodview Park is about a mile away, but it is east of Highway ninety-nine. So it's difficult for pedestrians to get there. Fire department said we have a five minute, ten second response time from station eight. Finance indicated that the total tax rate for the property would increase. And the school district estimated that twenty-five students would be generated with the future development and they'd be eligible for transportation of Forest Ridge, Whittaker and McNary schools. As with most of the annexations we've had recently, this one is exempt from voter approval under Senate Bill fifteen seventy-three because the owners signed the annexation petition, the property is in the urban growth boundary, subject to the comprehensive plan and contiguous. The annexation may not be referred to the voters, but council retains the authority on whether to annex the territory. And council may either adopt, modify or reject the planning commission's recommendation for those land use designations. Staff's recommendation is that council adopt order twenty twenty-two dash one ANX, determining that the proposal meets the criteria, changing the zoning and approving withdrawal from the Kaiser Fire District. That's the end of the presentation and I'm available to answer any questions.
Great, thank you. We'll go ahead, uh, and here we have only one person signed up, Chris Anderson, who is the applicant. Uh, Mr. Anderson has, uh, ten minutes.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, this is, uh, Brad Kilby with Harper Hop, Peterson, Magellus. I represent, uh, Mr. Anderson and Clutch Industries in this project.
Ah, okay.
Registered. So, uh, thank you for your time. I'll, I'll provide the presentation. Can I share my screen here?
Sure.
Yes. Okay, let's see here. Thank you for your time. Uh, again, Brad Kilby, I'm the planning manager with Harper Hop, Peterson, Magellus. Address is two zero five Southeast Spokane Street, Portland, Oregon, nine seven two zero two. I'm here tonight on behalf of Clutch Industries to represent case, uh, case number ANXC uh, seven forty-two, which is the annexation and rezon request for thirty-four seventy-six and thirty-four eighty Blossom Drive Northeast in Salem, Oregon. Uh, the proposal is to annex, uh, three and a half acres into the city of Salem and rezone the property to multifamily residential from Marion County's urban transportation, at least the, uh, I mean, urban.
Transition?
Urban transition zone, thank you. Uh, which is basically a zone that a county will set aside as a holding zone until properties are annexed and urbanized. Um, this applies to the west half of the property. The east half of the property already carries a multifamily zoning designation. And a multifamily designation on this property would be consistent with the Salem Mary Conference of Plan. The project is located right here, um, and it's between I five, uh, east of I five and just west of Highway ninety-nine E. And it's in an area that is somewhat, um, developed with, uh, multifamily and a mix of, uh, single family housing types. And then has some industrial lands, uh, to the west. The property if annexed, oops, excuse me. Uh, is adjacent to the existing city limits. And so if it's annexed to city limits, we just move, uh, shift east around the property. That's within the urban growth boundary. Uh, it's currently split, uh, like I said, with, um, uh, with the multifamily and the urban transition zoning from, uh, Marion County. The Salem Mary Conference of Plan designates the entire property as multifamily. And upon approval of the annexation of property within the city's own zoning that coincides with that conference of plan. Approval criteria are whether or not conference of plan and zone designation provides for the logical urbanization of land. Again, it's in the urban growth boundary, it's within an urban transition zone. We believe that it is, uh, primed for, um, urbanization. Uh, whether the conference of plan zone designation is compatible with the development patterns in the nearby vicinity. Properties to the east are zoned multifamily. Um, we believe that it is consistent with the Salem Mary Conference of Plan designation and with the, uh, neighborhood. And there are services and jobs located directly east of the property. Whether or not social, economic, demographic patterns of the nearby vicinity have still altered to the current designation are no longer appropriate. It's just that if it was annexed and urbanized, it warrant, uh, city zoning as opposed to county zoning. And whether it's in the public interest that the proposed change be made. Um, like I said, it's adjacent to the, um, existing city services. Just a couple of things. There's a sixteen inch public main that's located in Blossom, Blossom Drive Northeast, uh, water. There's a ten inch sewer line also located within that and a fifteen inch storm line, uh, that would all have to be extended to the property. I think it serves the property to the west. Um, so it would have to be extended to the property, uh, at such time that the property is developed. Um, and there are fire protection emergency services within, uh, close proximity to the site. Um, I guess the, the big thing for us on the, on the rezon to multifamily there, your two thousand and fifteen housing needs analysis illustrated that there was a need for twenty-eight hundred, uh, additional multifamily dwellings. And I've been involved in a couple of, uh, zone changes at the city of Salem. Um, and we haven't come up to the two hundred and seventy acre, two hundred and seven additional acres that need to be, uh, rezoned presidential or multi, for multifamily. And I believe that this property, uh, bringing in is, you know, three and a half acres. So it goes towards achieving your goal of increasing the, um, types of housing and different, different types of housing within the area. And we do believe that the rezon and annexation is in the best interest of the city. And we respectfully request that the city council accept the finding conclusions of the staff report and the planning commission recommendation to approve the requested annexation and zone change. With that, I'll conclude my presentation and I'm available for any questions you might have.
Great. Thank you very much. Uh, any questions? For Mr. Kilby? All right. Just a second here. I don't see anybody. Uh, any, any questions for staff? Okay. Then I'm going to, uh, close the public hearing and turn to, uh, Counselor Gonzalez. Do you want to give us a motion on this one?
Yeah, uh, I have some comments, but, um, I, oh, no, no, I'll do it after the motion. Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, so I move staff recommendation to adopt order twenty twenty-two dash one ANX.
Second. Second by Lewis. Okay, Counselor Gonzalez.
Yeah, thank you. You know, um, it's about time we got some development in that area. Years ago, you'd drive by and you'd think, where are we? I mean, it was a forgotten little corner of Salem. And I think long-term, I think, uh, early on, uh, Public Works Director, Mr. Fernandez and I, we spoke about having a crosswalk specifically around that area because kids from Chumawa, you know, they, they visit Roth's and Donald's and they're running across that portion of Portland Road. So I'm hoping that this opens a door to have a little bit more, um, make it a little safer for them. Um, yeah, because they just sprint across and it's just super dangerous. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, uh, discussion of the motion? Okay, if the, uh, recorder please call a roll.
Mr. Mayor, you might want to close the.
Well, I want to close that public hearing and, uh, now we'll have a vote on this.
Counselor Gonzalez.
Aye.
Counselor Hoy.
Aye.
Counselor Nordike.
Aye.
Counselor Lewis.
Aye.
Counselor Stapleton.
Aye.
Counselor Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Phillips.
Aye.
Counselor Leon.
Aye.
Mayor Bennett.
Aye. Okay, motion passes. We'll move on then to four B. Uh, I'll open the public hearing on twenty-one, five, twenty.
Salem City Council will now hold a public hearing for the purpose of reviewing the planning administrator's decision approving a phased subdivision tentative plan for property located at forty-five forty Pringle Road Southeast. The applicable criteria are Salem Revised Code two hundred five point zero one zero D and two hundred five point zero one five D. Testimony, arguments and evidence must be directed toward the applicable criteria or other criteria which the person believes to apply to the decision. A failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to that issue shall preclude appeal to the land use board of appeals on that issue. A similar failure to raise constitutional issues relating to proposed conditions of approval precludes an action for damages in circuit court. The hearing will be conducted with staff presentation first, followed by testimony from the following. The applicant is limited to ten minutes. Neighborhood associations per association are limited to five minutes, a total combined five minutes. Um, other interested parties are limited to three minutes and the applicant's rebuttal is limited to five minutes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Bennett. Um, are you able to see my camera? Do you see my presentation here?
Yes.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Bennett, members of council. My name is Aaron Panko with the Community Development Department. Here to present the council review of the Meyer Farm subdivision, which is a phased subdivision plan to divide property located, uh, forty-five forty Pringle Road Southeast into a hundred and thirty-nine single family lots ranging in size from four thousand square feet to three point six four acres in size, um, in two phases of development. At this time, I'd like to enter into the record, the staff report, including all attachments and all public testimony received to date.
Hey, thank you.
Um, this is the vicinity map of the property. The property is approximately thirty acres in size. This is the vicinity map of the property. The property is approximately thirty acres in size. It's in the area of South Commercial. Commercial Street Southeast is located to the west. It's shown in the purple here. It's designated as a major arterial street. Pringle Road on the east side of the property and Battle Creek Road meet at the northeast corner of this property. Pringle and Battle Creek is designated as a minor arterial street in the Salem Transportation System Plan. And then Hillficker Lane is a collector's street on the southern end of the property. And the Transportation System Plan calls for an extension of Hillficker Lane through the property to Pringle Road. Zooming out, this slide shows the street network in the surrounding area. Commercial Street and Pringle Battle Creek provide the north-south arterial connectivity. However, there's no direct east-west connections in the area between Kubler Boulevard and Redona Avenue. So to address connectivity, the Transportation System Plan calls for Hillficker Lane, a collector's street, to be extended through the property, connecting Commercial Street to Pringle and Battle Creek. This is a zoning map of the property. The property is currently split Zone RS, Single Family Residential, which is identified in the yellow on the western portion of the site and RA Residential Agriculture, identified in light blue on the eastern portion of the site. The property is surrounded by residential zoning designations. There are commercial zoning designations located to the west along Commercial Street. And then east of Battle Creek is the Fairview Mixed-Use Zone. This is a recent aerial photo of the property. The blue line at the northwest corner of the property identifies an unnamed mapped waterway that originates on the subject property and flows north, eventually draining to Pringle Creek. There is an existing home and outbuildings that are located on the southern of the property. They're surrounded by a grove of existing trees, including several Oregon white oaks that are classified as significant trees. And Hillficker Park directly abuts the property to the south. The park is accessible to the public by Hillrose Street Southeast and Sunland Street Southeast. And this is a photo of the property. This is taken from Hillficker looking north towards the property. This is in the area of the significant tree grove. The home is back here. And this is another photo taken from Hillficker. This is looking northwest. Twelfth Street is over here and there's some existing homes on the other side of Twelfth Street. This slide shows the tentative plan to divide the property into a hundred and thirty-nine lots in two phases. The tentative plan shows three open space areas. There's an open space area in the northwest corner of the property that's approximately three point one four acres in size. This area contains sloped topography, mapped waterway, and existing trees, including five significant trees. A stormwater detention pond is proposed in the area next to Mandy Avenue. The area is otherwise proposed to remain as a natural area. Second open space area is located at the northeast corner of the property and is proposed to be used for stormwater detention. And a final open space area, approximately zero point one four acres in size, is located near the center of the property, which is accessible by a pedestrian pathway connecting between Hillficker Lane and Ramsey Road. The existing home and accessory buildings will be located on a large lot, approximately three point six four acres in size. When land divisions result in creation of a larger lot such as this, there are more than half an acre in size. The code requires an applicant to provide a shadow plat showing how the lot could be further divided in compliance with city standards. Some of the applicant's plans show the home site being divided further. But this is just for demonstration purposes. The three point six four acre home site is not being further divided with this application. A separate subdivision application would be needed in order to further divide the home site. This slide shows the proposed phasing plan. Phase one results in creation of eighty-six lots and the extension of Hillficker Lane through the property to connect Pringle to Battle Creek. Phase two includes fifty-three lots. The applicant has submitted a tree conservation plan in conjunction with the proposed subdivision that identifies a total of eight hundred and eight trees on the property. The tree conservation plan approval criteria require in part that no riparian trees or vegetation and no significant trees are designated for removal unless there are no reasonable design alternatives and that a minimum of twenty-five percent of the total number of trees are designated for preservation. The tree conservation plan identifies for preservation three hundred and fifty-five trees, which is approximately forty-three point nine percent of the total number of trees on site, exceeding the minimum preservation requirement. No riparian trees or vegetation are proposed for removal. Based on the latest information submitted by the applicant, the number of trees, significant trees, has increased. So there are now a total of eight significant trees located on the property, on private property that are designated for removal, which are shown clouded in red. These trees are proposed for removal due to grading and construction of Hillficker Lane and due to grading and conflicts with future building envelopes and a pedestrian pathway. There's also four significant trees located off-site within the right-of-way for Twelfth Street. These four trees are proposed for removal due to widening on Twelfth Street. A significant number of public comments have been received during the review of the application overwhelmingly in opposition to the proposal, including testimony received from the Morningside Neighborhood Association. Staff has tried to address some of the major themes from the testimony, but because of all the issues raised in the testimony could not be summarized. Staff has provided all testimony received directly to council. And staff has done a complete analysis of the application materials and the approval criteria for approval of a phased subdivision and found that the application is consistent with the approval criteria and therefore recommends that the City Council affirm the decision of the planning administrator. And thank you. That concludes my presentation.
Great, thank you, Mr. Panko. Okay, we'll move on first to public comment. I do want to remind people we have in excess of twenty folks signed up. If you hear things being said that you would just want to repeat, if you could just say you agree and move along, that'd be great. If not, certainly understood. Everybody has their opportunity and we'll move right along. The first first speaker is Garrett Stevenson, who is the applicant. He has ten minutes or Miss Stevenson, if you are sharing this with Jennifer Arnold, she also is the applicant. You two share that ten-minute period.
And, excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
Do I understand that right?
If I may, Mr. Stevenson may be having Diego Argüa speak as well and/or Roy Hankins in addition, so they'll have a combined ten minutes.
All three? Or how many people are speaking?
There could possibly be four.
Four?
That'll be up to Mr. Stevenson.
Good. Miss Stevenson will count on you to manage this. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Bennett. Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. My name is Garrett Stevenson. I'm not the applicant, but I am the applicant's attorney. And I am not really going to be doing the bulk of our presentation tonight, but I wanted to go ahead and go through our cast of characters for you. We do have a few folks here that we wanted to make available to you. If you've got specific questions about some of the issues that came up during the review, such as trees and traffic. So with us tonight, we've got Jennifer Arnold, who's our case planner. She's going to go through the nuts and bolts of the application with you. We've also got Diego Argüa and Todd Tarrigan, who are our traffic and tree experts respectively. And we're making them available to answer any questions you may have, but we wanted to mention that they are here and available. The applicant, Mr. Marty Kehoe, is also online tonight, as is Roy Hankins. But Jennifer and I will be taking the lion's share of the presentation tonight. I understand I've got five minutes for rebuttal, but if there's any chance I could reserve any unused time and add to that, I would appreciate that. And with that, I will go ahead and turn it over to Jennifer to give you our presentation.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Garrett. And thanks, Mr. Mayor and council. I'm Jennifer Arnold. I'm a senior planner with Emilio Design. I've been working with my team here as well as the applicant, Marty Kehoe, for this application to get it to this step. I think staff did a great job of describing our application and project up to this point. We originally submitted our application July fourteenth of last year. It was deemed complete in September. Due to some scheduling and noticing issues, we are here before you today instead of last month, which worked out anyway. So then I wanted to also note that with the November third Planning Administrator decision that approved our application or got us to this call-up position with an approved application, they have noted that we've demonstrated all applicable criteria and our application is consistent with the provisions outlined in the RA and RS zone for single-family development in the area. The staff presentation noted that there were some additional trees. We met with the Morningside Neighborhood Association above what the minimum standard is for neighborhood contact December tenth to go over some changes that we made to our application in response to the initial public comments that were received. We wanted to make sure that any minor tweaks that we could make to the application to satisfy some of those concerns were made and also to let the neighborhood know that we hear the concerns and we are trying to do everything we can to make this application the best benefit for the community and the most equitable for everybody around. Within the changes, we made some note to the tree preservation plan to differentiate on and off-site trees. We made some change to the phasing plan to make it a more equal split between phase one and phase two. We also adjusted our Twelfth Street improvements in order to move those improvements further away from the protected stream that's identified on the site. And we wanted to make sure the Neighborhood Association had an opportunity to go over those changes and make sure that they saw them. In that meeting, which was a pretty productive evening meeting, we seem to have narrowed down the majority of the comments to two topics, one dealing with trees and one dealing with traffic. And we have Diego here to discuss some of the traffic changes if there are questions associated with that. And then as far as the trees go, we were discussing at the neighborhood meeting the fact that trees grow and the initial tree inventory was taken in two thousand and nineteen. Our application was submitted in twenty-one and therefore trees typically grow in that time period. And we should reassess to make sure we have an accurate representation of those significant trees. So we went out and looked at any tree that could potentially have grown in that time period based on the percentage outlined at the neighborhood meeting and pretty much looked at every tree we identified in two thousand and nineteen around the seventeen and eighteen inch by DBH standard and reassessed that. So of the reassessed trees, there were thirty-six. One of those was misidentified from or as an oak, but it's a fir tree. So of the remaining thirty-five trees, we had twenty-seven that had grown to become a significant tree or above that threshold. So we wanted to make sure that it's very clear that we are not removing any additional trees. All of these trees were all slated to be removed in the initial application. It's just that trees grow and we wanted to accurately represent that fact. We're still above the minimum preservation threshold for the application. And the majority of those trees are being removed on private property for the purposes of grading either for the residential lot for reasonable use or for the required connections between public roads, either the collector of Hillficker or existing road stub to the site. So at this time, I can turn it over to Garrett or Diego if anybody would like to add anything for traffic or other.
Mayor Bennett and counselors, I don't have anything necessarily to add to the presentation that Jennifer just gave you, but I want to make sure that you knew that we've got our subject matter experts here in case you have any questions before our time runs out.
Let me get my, yeah, thank you. Great, appreciate you giving us that presentation. Do any counselors have questions on these various subject areas? You have the experts from the applicant available. Counselor Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this goes to Jennifer. I'm sorry, I didn't get your last name or it may go to the other gentleman here. You said you, trees grow, you made some changes in the percentage of trees that were removed and you're still above the minimum. I'm just curious, I think it was like forty-nine percent before and the minimum is twenty-five. What is it now after you made those changes and realized that some of them became more significant in the years that they grew from the time you did the original survey two years ago?
Our tree preservation percentage is still clocked at forty-three point nine four percent preservation. Our significant tree removal has gone from four to twelve.
And where did those, you may have said this, but I may have missed it. Where did the four, the other eight come from? They're not from the twelfth, they're from someplace else. Is that correct?
All of these, all of these trees were all identified either as preserved or removed prior to this latest reassessment. We just looked at a portion of trees that could possibly have grown up above the threshold of twenty-four. So they're all in the same location as they were before. The majority of the trees that have grown are in already existing open spaces. So we did try to preserve as many as possible.
Thank you.
Counselor Phillips?
Um, I, yeah, so thank you for being here tonight to answer our questions. I guess I want to try to understand the question that Counselor Anderson started to touch on, which is the change in the application and the number of significant trees. I appreciate that you guys went out and did some more data collection, but I'm a bit concerned that we've got competing sets of facts for, you know, the number of significant trees. Are you stating that the discrepancy is just due to tree growth between two thousand and nineteen and two thousand and twenty? Or were there any errors in your original calculations?
We did find a couple of errors where we counted a specific tree as an oak when it wasn't just based on the amount of trees on site and the survey taken. But yes, the discrepancy is due to the growth of the trees.
And then I guess my follow-up question would be, are you aware of the testimony, the written testimony? I don't fault you if you're not. There's hundreds of documents that cite discrepancies as large as, you know, a variance of a tree being reported as ten inches versus forty-two inches. And do you have any explanation for those, you know, that testimony that was received from, you know, the neighborhood community here?
We have gone through the public testimony that we've received. We have noted that some of the errors were due to the tree type and the miscounting of the tree type. But it really comes down to a surveyor is out on site and they're surveying trees. And that survey occurred in two thousand and nineteen and now we're in a period where we've had various weather patterns that allowed for some tree growth, but they were not at a consistent percentage. So some of the arguments we read in public testimony weren't entirely consistent with the information that we had from our experts.
Counselor Phillips, if I may, just sort of put a little bit finer point on that. You know, from our standpoint, we believe that the best evidence in the record of which trees are there is the survey that was conducted and then re-verified later. And it is our position that the trees, and I think this has sort of come out, but I just want to make it very, very clear. The trees that we are adding as significant trees, those were trees that were already identified in the original survey. However, because it was some time ago, they were not counted as significant and effectively they were bumped up, if that makes sense. And that came out of the applicant's contact with the neighborhood and then the applicant's decision to go back out and take a second look. So I don't think that there is a large number of discrepancies. I think that what you've got is, are being sensitive to the information that we did obtain from the neighborhood. Is are being sensitive to the information that we did obtain from the neighborhood and going back out and ground truthing that.
I appreciate that. I still, on this topic, I have other follow up questions. So did you make any changes as a result of the, you know, your meeting with? The Morningside Neighborhood Association, like a substantive change or just kind of updating the accuracy of the tree counts?
We updated the accuracy of the tree counts. We did not go through and remove additional trees or preserve additional trees based on the information. We just accurately represented those trees.
Okay.
Counselor Phillips, in an attempt to maybe illustrate an answer to your question. If Mr. Panko is available, I'd like to bring up that image showing the significant trees for removal and that might help you understand. Exactly why they're being proposed for removal. Thank you, Mr. Panko. So if you look at where these significant trees are, the vast majority of them. Are, and I suppose we could go from left to right. The vast majority of them are in rights of way that are proposed to be either created or expanded. Obviously, we can't retain a tree. That's going to be within a road. And then if we look at some of these others. Some of them are smack dab in the middle of a building footprint, which we need to provide. And then some of them are so close to the building footprint that I'm guessing it would be very infeasible to construct a home. And build a foundation. In such a way that you are saving those trees. So I I want to make sure that we're putting this kind of in context of what the reality is on the ground. And again, these were trees that were originally proposed for removal, but I guess for additional made the cut to be. Significant. So I I just wanted to have this back in front of you so you had a picture to look at in in our discussion.
So am I counting right? There's twelve trees involved here in this discussion? Am I understanding that?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I got it. Okay, Counselor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And if we could just leave this slide up, that would be great. So as I understand it, you. You can't cut down significant trees unless no reasonable design alternative exists or something that that I'm probably not getting the language exactly right, but that's the sentiment. And in my way of looking at this. This map, if you look at lot number forty, there's this pretty significant space down below there. Where you could include some other lots. So in other words, if you were to leave, say, lots. Leave or not build on lots of forty through forty four, you could pretty easily relocate those down. Into that open space in that in an area that's. Looks like it's going to be a three point six four acre lot. And also you'd have some space to relocate some of those lots from the other side of the map, say it's from fifty seven, fifty. Fifty eight, nine, sixty, in those areas. Why didn't you just move those lots and save those trees? That seems like a reasonable alternative to me.
Jennifer, this is Roy Hankins. I'm the project engineer working on this. To answer your question, is that area to remain is for the Meyer Homestead parcel? You know, they were they were very specific about the area they wanted to retain for themselves as part of the property.
Okay, so that they're making a choice to make a three point six four acre. Lot and 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 build out the rest of it and cut down the significant trees, but it would be a reasonable alternative. To to make that maybe a little smaller than three point six four acres, wouldn't it?
And and that's between the seller of the property and the developer. So this is this was the area we were given to work with it.
Okay. Thank you.
And you can also see that there's another significant tree that we're showing. In that area to remain that we didn't want to encroach in any further.
All right, Counselor Anderson, I'm sorry.
Good, Mr. Mayor. I I appreciate what Counselor Hoy was saying and I also appreciate that the Myers family wanted to retain three point six four acres. I look at this another way. As I look at those trees. The not the four on the streetway on the left hand side, but I look at the other eight on either side of the, you know, triangle there. By my count, that's nine lots with trees on them. So did you or the owners or the developers consider just saying instead of a hundred and thirty nine lots? We'll just put in a hundred and thirty lots and leave those nine lots open. And allow the significant white oak trees to remain. It is, you know, that's that's, I don't know, that's eight percent, six percent of the the total someplace in there. Was consideration to give into that, just say, we will not build on these, we'll leave these lots as open space, they all back up into open space. And and have the oak trees there.
There was. I'd like Roy to take that and then Roy, when when you're done, maybe I can have a couple of moments to help answer.
So we worked with the variety. Thank you for the questions, Mr. Anderson. We did look at all options. The the client developer was trying to balance, you know, densities, code requirements, the criteria. The concern was with when you put Hillficker through there and make that connection. It it was tough to get that to fit on an alignment that worked with the grades, still be a reasonable connection. And yes, we did look at options, but at a certain point. The trees that we've we weighed the value of the trees versus the the number of trees we're saving with the remaining area as the balance.
If I could follow up, I guess another way to say this, I'm not necessarily espousing this, but you could also say we determined that we needed the profit. We wanted to profit on those nine lots because we would develop and sell them. And as opposed to we make less of a profit on just a hundred thirty lots.
That is another way of looking at it, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Anderson, to that point, I just want to make two or three other points. I don't. You know, I don't think that the criteria require analysis of potential profit. What the criteria say is whether or not there are. Design alternatives. And when you look at how this is laid out, there's a couple of things that occur to me. Number one, you don't want to necessarily lose lots on the opposite side of a brand new road that you're putting in. That makes it very difficult. In some cases to take advantage of the invest, the public investment in the infrastructure you're building. But the other thing I I want to point out is that the object, the the criteria that we're subject to. Are supposed to be clear and objective. And as Mr. Panko pointed out, we've met all of them. The question about the trees is, I think, an important one, and I think what. The course of this project has shown is that we've been very conscious of that and tried to work with the neighborhood and have been happy to go back and sharpen our pencils. There are some trees, as Jennifer alluded to, that we were able to accommodate. Through some design work, but here's the ones that we cannot. And under Oregon state law. It's not a question of losing lots. It's a question of whether we can reconfigure it in some way. To get the density that this area has been planned for, which is four thousand square foot minimum lot sizes. And I got to tell you, Counselor Anderson, those, that's a high, high density residential zone and I've always commended Salem. On on having that density because it allows homes to be more affordable. But I don't think it's a situation where either we or the code. Contemplate simply losing lots in order to accommodate trees. The idea is to lay the thing out in such a way as you can. Make everything work as best you can. That includes streets, that includes drainage, that includes meeting the density that this area is known for. So. I wanted to just give you an idea of all the different tensions that hold these projects in one way or another. And after all of that, this is what we're left with.
Yeah, I appreciate it, Mr. Stevenson, and and I understand that if this were an easy project, it wouldn't be coming to the council with all these problems and I understand those. And I also happen to be a lawyer, so I do understand, you know, the the requirements of the. Meeting the rules and regulations, but if that's all that were the requirements, then why do they come to the council for a policy decision if there is a policy decision? Those are all, and I appreciate the fact that the work that you and the rest of the development company, the people we've talked to today. The efforts you've made to respond to the questions and the needs of the. Concerns of the neighborhood and and the counselors here. It's just at some point, we're going to have to make a decision. Thank you.
Counselor Leung.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a few questions. For lots five, I guess a tree slash lots five, five, four, six to two, five, seven, nine. Those are the street trees that are being removed, correct, for street development or improvements?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And then my next question. Under where that says house lot number forty, there's like this green stamp with like two circles around it. What is that?
All right, go ahead.
Okay, so that that tree we're looking at, the canopy radius for what what we'd have to look at for, you know. If we can save the portion of that tree, how much, we are looking at how much of that tree we could save and still build a lot. So that tree is intended to stay there. It is a significant tree. It's just, hey, we got to be careful of the footprint of that house we put in.
Okay, so that it's not that the half the tree is being removed?
No, no.
Okay, maybe some branches might be removed then depending on.
It's the root zone we're worried about on that one.
Okay.
Because you'll have to dig out part of the roof to put a foundation, the root zone, sorry.
A part of the root foundation will be removed for to accommodate house lot number forty then?
Correct.
Are you working with a a follow up question? Are you working with a? A arbor, arborer, arborer or some other tree person to make sure if you are removing the roots that you're not going to kill the tree in the process?
Yes, we are. So we've we've had the arborist in some of these trees that we, you know, that are marked to come down are inferior or good or poor quality as well. So we took that in consideration too. Some of these trees are actually poor quality trees that are significant. Due to age, damage, weathering, ivy growth. There's a few few items in there that have affected the tree health as well.
Okay, and then kind of jumping back to the open space, it's three point one four acres? Sorry. My question is, what is that open space? Is it just going to be just not touched and just kind of left as is?
It will be. So you can see there's a bit of detention pond. Up in the upper right corner, so where the grading lines are, we'll have to do some grading to make the grades work out. But other than that, we intend to leave that area untouched and natural.
Okay.
There'll be a little impact on Twelfth Street because we'll have to widen to put in the sidewalk and curb and structure on that side.
Okay, and then, and this is more more of a generalized question. I mean, you've mentioned repeatedly that you worked with the Morningside Neighborhood Association with your presentation and and. Keeping going, going back and forth on having conversations and trying to make changes to try and meet some of the needs or or concerns of the community. At your, when was the last time you actually met with the Morningside meeting association?
We last met with them December tenth.
December tenth?
Yes.
Okay. And then my last question, and then it looks like Counselor Phillips has some questions again. My last question is specifically about cost. I mean, these are all single home units. And I heard briefly something about affordability, but these homes are only going to be market rate, correct? It's not going to be affordable housing.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Nordike.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And first of all, I appreciate all the information provided. I appreciate all the testimony and all the questions by my peers on council. I want to pick up where Counselor Leung left off and that has to do with housing affordability. And when I was looking through the massive amount of materials for this matter. I could see that how affordable housing is defined is really of rather generous definition. If it's it's in page fifty one of our materials. And it talks about the applicant being subject to Oregon's needed housing statutes and. I won't repeat all of it at length, but essentially it appears that you folks in support of the project are taking the position that. It meets those criteria because of some basic rules laid out there and I'm not going to repeat it. I guess my my question is, since it's going to be market rate. I'm a little unclear what the average lot size is. And let me just, hold on, let me take a look at my notes here. So it says here you're developing one hundred thirty nine single family lots ranging in size from four thousand square feet to three point six four acres. And as I understand of three point six four acres, that's really just for the Meyer farm. But all the other lots, are they going to be four thousand? Are they going to be a range? I'm curious what the lot size would be.
I would say the best way to look at it is primarily the minimum lot sizes are about four thousand square feet. And based on some of the geometry corner lots, you know, you probably get up to around a couple of those lots, maybe up to six thousand square feet. But primarily they're in the four, four thousand, forty five hundred square foot range.
Okay, great, thank you. I also saw in the materials, one of the persons who submitted testimony. Suggested a need for an archaeological investigation into the site, given the Kalapunia heritage surrounding this property. So I don't know if this is a question for city staff or whom exactly to address this to, but has there been any? Has there, has anyone looked into that in in terms of whether there is such a requirement for this particular property to do some sort of. Archaeological study or consideration of the tribes?
We do have an inadvertent discovery plan in place that was submitted with our our application. Basically, it's taking a very sensitive approach to anything that may be found on the site or if other people. Or organizations come forward and request such study, we have provisions in our plan to make that happen. But we haven't, as far as an applicant team, we have not gone through and done a study.
Vanessa, I would suggest that would be really good for staff. They they do indicate there's really. Substantial both archaeological and historical. Interest in that area, so I think it's one to bring up again with Mr. Panko.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll take you up on that.
Great, thank you. Counselor Phillips.
Sorry, some technical issues. Let me see if I'm, I just covered my page. There we go. Okay, so the four significant trees along Twelfth Street. Those are being removed because of the revision of Twelfth Street. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and Twelfth Street is a non-standard street even with the improvements that you're recommending. In terms of like the best we can get that grade to is like nineteen percent.
Nineteen is a little steep. I think we thought we had it about seventeen or sixteen percent.
You might get it down to seventeen.
Yeah, it's a it's a steeper than a normal street, yes.
You have to get a variance for that street, but you are improving it. So and those trees are in the street, so that's those trees are done. I mean, I'm a little concerned that that street is non-standard, but I I don't, you know, it's a very steep area. So I'm I'm primarily focused on the eight residual trees that are near the the farmstead property. How many of those trees are being removed because of a street?
I would say with those, I would say two for sure, forty three and ninety four.
So they're they're gone just because that's like the only way to get the street to connect?
Yes, well, yes.
Is is the one up by the future McCullum? On the east side of McCullum, is that being removed because of the the Hillficker Street or because of the public walkway, pedestrian walkway?
It would be both. You're going to, the grades of that street, you're, you know, you're, the road is steeper than where the existing grade is to make that connection. And then you also will have a tie in for the pedestrian connection to the open space.
So there's, I mean, I I guess like the the concern is, is there any reasonable design alternative that that allows us to save as many of those those eight trees as possible? That isn't what you guys have laid out. Because I, I mean, I would not be as concerned as I am or as skeptical as I am if we weren't getting rid of the eight trees that are near the the farmstead property. Once they're gone, they're gone. And I mean, I know that you guys don't think upstream from the criteria. But usually when forty three percent of trees are preserved, you know, at the end, once the root zones start getting impacted, the actual number preserved is much less. So I I just, I I mean, is there any wiggle room for like trying to redraw these out? Did you guys consider, you know, more density in terms of, you know, like duplexes or other alternatives? I appreciate the need for density, but I I don't want to be doing density at the cost of significant trees. I mean, are there other, you know, design alternatives that are possible that would get us the density without getting rid of these trees?
We did go through a bunch of different alternatives, extensive alternatives, and this. And this was what we felt the best use of managing the city, you know, trees, preserving as many as we could. But yet still getting the connection and the development that we needed.
And then I guess like it's probably been said before, but I'm I'm, it's my, beginning of my second year, so I'm doing this for three hundred and sixty-eight days. Um, the, do you have to have like the the property on both sides of Hillficker to make it pencil out? Um, cause I, I mean, I guess, you know, the frontage improvement is is based on like having a property on it. But is is there any way to get that road without as many, uh, you know, lots abutting it where there's all those that that confluence of a grove of trees?
Right, so for the case in point, the tree thirty-one forty-one, um, it is considered poor condition. Um, it's failing in health anyway. So as you look at a tree like that, it's probably on its way out anyway. We've looked at a couple of the other ones that were still questionable in margin law's health as well, but you know, with with building that road, your con- connection between Hillficker and Pringle, or you know, Hill, Twelfth Street and Pringle Road. You have to kind of go one way or the other, and this by far is the least uh destructive path by connecting that road. You know, early on in this exhibits that was showing going Hillficker, straight through the Meyer Homestead property, um, and going down Hillroads. You know, that takes out a whole line of, you know, significant trees that we weren't interested in taking out.
And then are there, are there any other non-standard streets besides Twelfth Street?
Okay, I believe we asked for an exceptional Hillficker just due to the grade. There's a little bit of steepness in grade there.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Um, just one second. I think it was Virginia. Go ahead.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor, and thanks to everybody here who's answering all these uh tough questions. Um, I want to start by saying that I appreciate the amount of open space you guys have preserved. Um, I think everybody on council is uh really appreciative of those um larger open areas where a lot of tree canopy is protected and preserved. Uh, my question is about the difference in um the size of trees between the two different um, I guess, times at which folks went out and took measurements. And it, my question is, is it? Was it one year difference uh between the times that things were measured, or was it a two-year difference? And and how much were trees growing? To my understanding, a significant tree is a very old tree that is not growing rapidly. Um, and so for me to hear that your numbers jumped significantly. Um, I'm not, I'm not sure how that happens and over that short, short amount of time um that that's happening. And I guess the reason why I'm asking this is that um, one, I really appreciate you going back out and and retaking these and being open and honest about uh your new findings. Um, but for me, what I hear a lot with these types of new developments and and with with the public interacting with a developer or with city councilors, um, interacting with things like this. There has to be a really high level of trust between folks. And when we have these kind of discrepancies, I think that kind of chips away at some of that, that trust that we're trying to build uh between folks who have never met each other. Uh, and uh, so it's already a tough, uh, you know, a tough situation, but change is hard in general. Um, but I really want to get at this so that I can regain some of that trust uh in the process by hoping to understand more of what exactly happened. Um, and and how those numbers changed so dramatically over such a short period of time.
So I will, I'll take this one. Thank you, Virginia. Um, when we got the data, the packet came to Amerio for us to look at ushering this project through, some of the previous developer and developing teams had surveyed, and it was, it was in probably twenty eighteen. So our pre-app was early, like February of twenty twenty. So it had been fifteen months, which isn't a significant amount of time. But we thought, hey, we'll we'll move through the process as we go through it and saying, this is the data that we were given. Some of the things we understood as we got a little further into it was the significant tree requirements. Okay, we've got to look at these trees. Here's the data. We went through and mapped out all the white oaks that were twenty-four and large. We sent out our arborist to go out and do an assessment and health and quality of those. And when he went out there, he said, hey, this tree, why you said it was a twenty-six inch tree, really, it was a twenty-six inch tree. But the di- it was split on two branches, so really it's like a thirty-inch tree, you know, where the trunk's split. And so we were getting some clarity from our arborist, you know, we were using the data we had at hand. We used that updated arborist data, in which even the homeowner association would point out to us, hey, you said this was this tree and it's kind of grown. Well, that was some discrepancy and plus the fact that it's now a year, year beyond that. So you're two, two and a half years from when the original tree survey was done. So we realized, hey, we we would be probably in the best interest of everybody to help gain the trust and confidence that what we're looking at. We went back and said, okay, if the tree that was measured originally, we have a data, the average growth of these trees were about eighteen percent and twenty percent. What's the likelihood that a tree is now twenty-four inches, which would be significant? If you back backtrack, that's like, okay, anything eighteen, nineteen, and twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, let's go look at those again to determine in fact if those truly had grown. That is what we did, and that's with the updated numbers that we provided, um, what Jennifer did and for Aaron, what the latest round was that we got to this point. So based on public comments, need, just want to be general accurate, because we don't, we want to keep the trust as well that, you know, we're trying to do a good project. We're meeting all the criteria that's out there, but you're right. It does say, well, if the numbers are a little different, how do you guys come up with these different numbers? That's kind of how the, how we got to where we were.
Yeah, great. Okay, thank you so much for that clarification. Just a quick follow-up here, um, question about trees. I understand that you are the developer, but not necessarily the home builders. Um, but is there any kind of plan in place right now um for replanting of the trees that we are taking out?
There is a provision in the code for, um, I believe it's two, two, for lots, the lot sizes, we have two street trees per each lot. So at a hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty lots, you're gonna have another two hundred and eighty trees. And that's not including corner lots, they get an extra tree. So we're gonna have probably an excess of three hundred trees going back.
Great, thank you so much.
Granted, they're smaller, they'll take time to grow, but yes.
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Just I got a quick.
Remember, we've got over. By, these are your constituents.
So the the intersection of Twelfth and Albert and then the intersection of Hillficker, Hillficker and the junction of of Pringle and Battle Creek, are you guys responsible for the improvements to those intersections?
So as part of our development, yes, we are gonna do the, when Hillficker comes down to Pringle and Battle Creek, we are doing that intersection connection on I guess it'd be the southwest side.
Yeah, I think it's conditions thirteen to fourteen.
Yes, yes.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Counselor Leon?
Thank you. Um, kind of a a follow-up question to one of the things, I think, um, Mr. Hankins, you mentioned about um, you're expecting about three hundred trees to be um replaced or growing, planting of three hundred trees, if I heard you a moment ago?
Right, when you, when the street trees, when the homes are built, they usually have a frontage street tree placed in front of the lots. Based on our lot size, I believe we're getting two for every standard lot. Um, corner lots may get a couple more here or there. The three hundred may be a high number, but at least it's two eighty or better.
Okay, and um I understand there's usually a list that's given to you from the city, from like which choices to choose from. Do you have an idea if you will be choosing variety of them, or are you only gonna be choosing like one?
I think we'll work with our landscape architect to, you know, maybe give the corridor, give, you know, a a variety, so you're consistent in different directions and types.
Thank you.
Um, Counselor Leon, if I might um add on to that answer, uh, I, while you guys were talking, I went ahead and um looked up the tree planning requirements in the code, and section eight oh eight sub oh five oh says that within development development proposals for the creation of lots and parcels to be used for single-family homes. Each lot or parcel shall contain at a minimum uh the number of trees set forth in table eight oh eight dash one. And when you look at that table, for the sizes of lots that we're doing, um, we have to do at least two, not just street trees, but two on the property itself. I think the street trees would be in addition to that, uh, if I'm not mistaken. So it's quite possible that you're gonna see more than that three hundred number out there. You're gonna see two per, two on each lot plus the number of street trees that were required to plant by the City of Salem Public Works Department.
Okay. All right, uh. I'd like to move on then to the Neighborhood Association. Everybody okay? Okay. Pam Schmiedling?
I am here.
Hello.
Hello.
I've got listed you, Jeff James, and Dell Huntington. You're going to be, you have five minutes.
Yes.
It's all for you, or you can share it with these fellas.
I'm gonna try to share it, uh, cause I know Jess is gonna comment later on on a personal issues for that. Um, so I just, I'd like to ask a question of Aaron before we get started.
Let's go with, okay.
Just because.
I I really think, Pam, why don't you do, let's start that clock again. Do your five minutes of testimony.
Okay.
Please.
Um, so the Morningside Neighborhood Association is has been busy and has been working for months, um, looking at all these projects. We have not only this particular project, but also eight other projects on the books. And um then you also have um the project, another project that's not started yet. So we're looking at a lot of traffic happening at Morningside, which I'm not sure um that we take that into consideration when we're looking at just an individual project. Oh, yes, I will only do so many numbers of trips. But when you look at them overall, there's a lot of trips there. And and a lot of people coming and going, and we just not sure that it all matters. Um, and I just want to make sure that we're working on all of it, not just single pieces. While I know everybody meets the criteria, is the criteria really good for the neighborhood? What's, is that what we want? And is that according to our neighborhood plan, which we wrote and revised? So with that, um, we just noticed a lot of discrepancies or I don't want to say omissions, but you know, things that weren't adding up in this particular development's um site. So I urge City Council to look at the submission that we made to you, especially on page fifteen, where it does list the trees, a lot of the trees. And they're two different time periods, one done in June of twenty-one and one done in July of twenty-one. And there seems to be already conflicting issues there. So we're just kind of trying to make sure that everything is coherent and will join together to make the neighborhood a better place. Um, my other question was uh about how do we get to Hillficker Park? Because I don't see any entrance. Usually you go down to Hillficker Lane and then out you could go, we were thinking you're gonna go out Hillroads. And while I understand there's trees there also, I'm just kind of wondering what, how do we get to Hillficker Park? Why did we make that a park if we're not gonna have people being accessible to it? So that's another thing that I just came up with as everybody was talking. Um, plus just the fact that all of this, of course, um, is in uh litigation with the Circuit Court due to the fact that the Meyer Farm is is in that, trying to dissolve the estate. So, you know, we can plan all we want, but it's not really up to us. It's up to whatever the court decides on to how this property is gonna be managed. Um, we are not for or against the development. But we kind of feel that we've been railroaded into just doing this plan. And there's been no alternatives uh given to us or to the city as to what they want done. And perhaps Hillficker Road could be moved a little bit, turned a little bit more, um, something to help those trees. Plus, we're concerned about the um archaeologists, uh, and if there's anything there that is um from the Native Indians. That that also needs to be taken into perspective and kept uh brought forward and kept up and and doing that. Um, that's probably the major issue that I have with it, that it just seems like we're, we're only getting one version, and I understand that, but there hasn't been a lot of communication between the two groups, nor has it been really a productive communication. Um, and I just feel that we need to look at all of the aspects of the property. Not just this one development. Deal.
Okay, very good. Okay, Jeff, you have thirty seconds.
Twenty-nine.
Maybe we can handle this by counselors asking us questions, because we've got our expert traffic engineer uh here as well. I'll try and summarize the executive summary in like um uh two minutes.
There aren't two minutes available right now.
Yeah, but this is a big development. It's important to our three hundred people that have testified.
That's, that's great. Time's up, Jeff. It's gonna, it's, it's over on this. So we'll pick you up with your three minutes here in a few, in a few minutes. Uh, next up, Dell Huntington.
I mean, I guess, can I, can I ask, will, will uh Mr. James be able to testify as an individual?
Yes.
But he'll get three minutes, okay?
Yeah, he has signed up twice on here, so.
Okay.
Uh, he's got three minutes. And Mr. Huntington, who has also signed up with Morningside Neighborhood Association, is getting three minutes right now, whenever he's ready to go.
I'm ready to go.
Okay.
Okay, um, first off, I'd like to say that I'm not a member of the association. I was asked to review the uh traffic analysis. And so I provided a text, it's in the Morningside Association response to the city, pages six through twelve. And I guess really quickly, I think there were many, in my opinion, there are many omissions. Uh, the first has to do with northbound Battle Creek at uh Hillrose Road. Currently, there is a sign, it's a regulatory sign, not a recommended sign, you're not allowed to make a left turn. Uh, Kittleson Associates uh just acknowledged that, but then they said they're going to allow left turns. There was never any analysis to show that a left turn could be allowed at that location, which is now prohibited. So I think that should be discussed and thoroughly looked at. The other thing is that there was an issue dis- discussing stopping site distance, intersection site distance. However, uh Diego acknowledged that the posted speed is forty miles an hour. I would recommend that there should be a speed study, because it's my impression that traffic northbound through that area travels much faster than the forty mile an hour posted speed. You also have a grade in excess of three percent. When you combine those two, you have a much greater stopping site distance, which I think has ever been addressed in the TIA. There's um, other things that I think are really critical is that on page twelve of the TIA. Uh, Kittleson has stated that no in-prost development were assumed with this project. I think that's a major fault. I think that with uh, he only assigned five percent of the Costco traffic on Battle Creek Road. Which I I I realize that's water under the bridge, but if that's the case, forty percent of Costco traffic was assigned to Kubler to the west. And since most of that would be coming from Dallas, uh, West Salem, then they're gonna be coming down commercial. That traffic, which would number in the thousands, would then be, should be analyzed at the Hillficker Commercial Street intersection, which was not. Uh, then also, I I think that there's a lot, I've identified several projects that have been approved by the city that should be considered with the traffic to grow the traffic correctly, i- in my opinion. So I I ended up making what I have as four recommendations on page, it's the final page of all my notes. Um, that would be page twelve of the letter. And so I've got four recommendations that I think city staff should go back to the traffic engineer and say that these things should be met and considered. Uh, the only thing that I I failed to write in the text is that I I believe that when Kittleson, they.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Huntington. I'm sorry, your three minutes are up. I, uh, one thing I did overlook, if, did anyone have questions for Pam? Schmiedling, I I kind of raced on by her. Yeah, Trevor.
So um, Chair Schmiedling, uh, what was the the letter from the Neighborhood Association? I I thought I remember it being in opposition to this specific site plan as plotted. Is that correct?
I don't believe we ever took a a stand on the le- on it. We just have a a series of uh concerns that we, we all kind of agreed upon. I don't believe the neighborhood ever took a vote on whether or not we opposed or were in favor of this development.
Great, thanks. Thanks, Pam, for clarifying that. That that's helpful. Anything else, Trevor, on this that you'd like to ask Pam? Anyone else wanna? Anything else, Trevor, on this that you'd like to ask Pam? Anyone else wanna ask Pam any questions? Uh, we'll go then. Sorry?
How about my question to Erin? How to get to Hillficker Park?
Yeah, we'll, we'll ask that for you.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's okay. Uh, any questions for Mr. Huntington? Yes, Tom.
Thank you, Mr. Huntington. I appreciated your information, and I will tell the staff that I can't find the pages you referred to, page twelve with your four improvements, and if there's any way staff can point out where it is to me at some point, I'd appreciate that. The other thing, I'm just curious, and I, uh, uh, you were doing this, this, this analysis. I'm interested if, uh, what your qualifications are, uh, to do kinda traffic analysis, uh, uh, other than an obvious interest in it.
Thank you, sir. Uh, I guess, can you hear me? So, um, I was at ODOT for twenty years. I managed the access management program there. I'm not a traffic engineer. I am a professional land surveyor. I've done a lot of research on access issues at the federal level. I've been involved in a lot of training across the nation. I used to work with Tony Martin when he was at ODOT. I used to work at Kittleson Associates for about nine years. I was a project manager on many Costco projects across the south and into Mexico. So I've got state, city, university, and, uh, though I'm not a traffic engineer, I have all that background experience.
Thank you very much. That's very helpful. I, I thought at one point you might just be somebody in the neighborhood, but I, I'm glad to hear those calls. You may be in the neighborhood.
Somebody in the neighborhood too, yeah.
Yeah.
I now live in the neighborhood, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Councilor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Huntington, Mr. Huntington, could you summarize your four recommendations or your four points for us?
Oh, uh, really quickly, I've recommended that the, uh, traffic engineer Kittleson Associates actually do a topographical survey of the vicinity of Battle Creek Road, Hill, Hill Rose Street intersection. And then based on that survey, that they would actually do an intersection design before the project is approved. The, the TIA recommends that that be done at a later point. I believe that Kittleson Associates has the designers and the skill that they could design an intersection before this goes too far down the road. I would recommend that. Take into account the actual speed that is occurring today on Battle Creek Road. Also consider the grade and the fact that this used to be signed with, it is currently signed with a regulatory sign, no left turn. Then my third one is to look, go back and look at the site-generated traffic, but also more importantly, the other traffic that has been approved by the city council, the northeast quadrant of I-5 at, uh, Kubler, the Costco traffic, all the other approved department developments that are, have been approved but not yet built. My fourth one then is to, once you look at additional traffic that's gonna be on the roads, to go back and look at both the capacity and traffic operations at Battle Creek Road, Hill Rose, and also bet on, uh, Hillficker Road at Commercial.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm just watching. Anyone else? Okay, uh, why don't we start, uh, through public testimony, then Heather Cohen? And remember again, three minutes and time's up, and if you hear something or agree with somebody, just say I agree with somebody or reference your written testimony. Heather, there you are.
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. I am concerned about the impact of traffic. I live in the neighborhood and people are always cutting through the local streets to get to Trader Joe's and local shopping. A hundred and forty more houses will only add to this burden. It often takes me at least one traffic light to get through the Hillficker Commercial intersection as is. The traffic impact analysis did not take into account all the local streets impacted, as we just heard. It also didn't take into account the compounded impacts of traffic from other new developments such as the Costco. The added traffic to the Kubler Pringle Battle Creek Exchange will have a heavy impact on my neighborhood. Uh, in terms of the trees, which we've heard, uh, there are also four hundred and fifty-three trees to be removed, many of them over three hundred years old. The tree inventory, as was heard, was submitted from twenty nineteen. There's so many inconsistencies in that in tree widths and counts when compared to more recent arborist reports. I know that the Morningside Neighborhood Association submitted an analysis to the city council showing these discrepancies. I also submitted it with my testimony. I, it is therefore impossible to know exactly how many protected white oaks will actually be removed without an updated tree plan. Further, it has countered the Salem's climate change plan to cut down so many trees in the first place. In terms of wildlife, there are currently fourteen protected wildlife species that need the Meyer Farm to survive. To date, there has been no study of the impact to protected species as a part of this proposal. Meyer Farm also has significant, uh, historical value. A barn on the property dates back to the eighteen fifties and is listed on the National Registry of Historic Places. There's also much to suggest that the land was a Native American burial ground with trees planted to resemble an arrowhead. And in terms of the land dispute, which you're gonna hear a lot about, uh, the ownership of the Meyer Farm has been in dispute in court for years and has yet to be settled. The majority of the family wish for the farm to stay in the family and continue to be a farm. They have even offered three million to the developer to get it back, but they have been refused. So for all these reasons, the Salem City Council must enter this proposal. Thanks.
Thank you. Heather, any questions for Heather? Uh, Diego Argaya?
Uh, yeah, hi, I'm Diego Argaya with Kittleson and Associates, and, uh, just been listening. I'm with the Apple team as a traffic engineer. And so, um, I may have been listed as a participant, but, uh, I'll be probably part of the rebuttal.
Okay, great. Thank you. Is Roy Hankins, Hankins also with the?
Yeah, yes, Mayor. You've heard from me.
There you are. Okay, okay. His name's, uh, Roger K. I know Roger's not part of the development team. Question is, is he here? Okay. James McAfee. There, can you hear me?
Can you hear me okay? I'm sorry.
Uh, there's Roger, yeah.
I was muted. I was muted, so my video is off. You'll have to-
You're gonna, your time's starting to burn on you, man.
Uh, for the record, my name is Roger K., President of Friends of Marion County. Friends of Marion County is an independent five oh one C three nonprofit affiliate of one thousand friends of Oregon. Our mission is to protect farm and forest lands in Marion County. Salem is the largest city in the county, and what you decide here tonight will have a big impact on livability in the city. We oppose and request denial of the subdivision application for the Meyer Family Farm. We submitted two letters about urban farming, which should be in your packet. They are listed on tonight's agenda as public comments received by one P M. One three twenty twenty-two. PDF pages thirty-nine seventy to seventy-one, and public comments received by Friends of Marion County, five P M. One-five twenty-two. Protection of farmland in the urban environment is as important as protection in the county. Close proximity by car or bus makes urban farming advantageous to city dwellers. Citizens of Salem may not be well acquainted with the availability of rural farm stands. These are located on the farms themselves, and some can be difficult to locate, being several miles from the city limits. I've included in my written comments names, locations, and types of products and services available at eight urban farms located in other Oregon cities, Portland, Bend, and Cove. In Portland, several are located within the inner parts of the city, which are easily accessible by bus. The Meyer Family Farm is located in South Salem, easily accessible by the Chariot's Bus Line. Thirty acre size of the farm makes it ideally suited for many different crops during all parts of the harvest season, including Christmas trees for the holiday. The farmland is an important resource in Salem and should be detected from development. Thank you for serving on the city council. Please make the right decision in this case to deny the application for the subdivision. And our motto for tonight's hearing is, let's grow Salem in the right way.
Hey, thank you, Roger. Any questions for Roger? Okay, James McAfee. He'll be followed by Jeff James, so.
Okay, am I on?
You're on.
Okay, thanks. Uh, yeah, I live on Roseway Court at the immediate north end of the, uh, proposed applicant subdivision, and I just wanted to point out a couple of things on the, the legal side, clarifying the formal record pursuant to O R S. Chapter one ninety-seven and O I R. Chapter six sixty-one, that the city must justify the findings on substantive evidence, and the point I wanted to make was that with the developer having the burden of proof, is that if there are insufficient facts to reach reasonable conclusions in the record itself, or if there are contrary facts, the city really has to dig deeper and to come up with a decision. This started with the Heller versus Josephine County case, a Luba case back in ninety-two. So what I wanted to, to point out, uh, sort of pre-Luba as a worst-case scenario, is that there, the other, the other speakers have pointed out some of these contradictory evidence and, uh, inadequate evidence that's in the application right now, specifically in particular on the traffic and the, um, uh, tree situation. So, eh, really regarding the traffic, you know, I noticed there's nothing regarding Madrona, Suntree, Mandy, or Albert. And, um, in addition, on the pedestrian bicycle access, there doesn't seem to be any connection to neighboring activity centers, which Fairview did. And the final point I wanted to make regarding the tree situation, inconsistencies, is on page seven of the November third planning decision, which is repeated verbatim on, in the January tenth twenty-two staff report, uh, is that classic language that the removal of the trees is necessary because of no reasonable design alternatives. Well, Fairview did it. They certainly have a much greater range of lots, over a hundred percent variation in their sizes. Um, and I don't see any particular design alternatives that were ever even considered according to what the developer has stated regarding other alternatives that the city council members have been digging and digging and asking questions about regarding the tree options. I noticed the replacement trees, um, under the, the, uh, new subdivision rules of S R C, uh, we're talking one inch diameter trees for the replacements. So that's hardly an, a, a, an apples-to-apples situation. It's definitely apples and oranges. So I wanted to point out these inconsistencies that really have to be sculpted out, in particular on the traffic situation that the traffic experts have gotten into a lot more detail on, and the trees, which is just a plain factual inconsistency, including the fact that all the staff reports specifically refer to the old reports and the new discovered trees that are coming up and discussed tonight aren't even in the reports. So that all needs to be considered in the record for purpose of-
Thank you very much, Mr. McAfee. Any questions? All right, Jeff James.
Mr. Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, could you ask the recorder to turn my video back on? They, they disabled it. Okay, I'm gonna try it again.
Just a sec. Looks like you're, there you are.
Okay, um, yeah, well, I, I recommend denial of the proposal. Um, there's been very little or no contact with the developer and the Neighborhood Association. The, the farm is a precious resource in, um, in this community. And I, I note that twenty-three family members are opposed to this development. Only three are in favor, and it's in the courts. So I know that the, in talking to the family members, that the family trusts will preserve the farm and the open space in future generations. So, uh, why you should deny this proposal, there's, uh, a few main points. The traffic report is defective, and you've heard from Mr. Huntington. Um, the trees are actually thirty to forty percent larger. There's two hundred and eighty-seven oaks on the property, a hundred and fifty-eight are proposed to be removed. That's fifty-five percent of the oaks. Uh, there's no goal five compliance at all, and the layout locates , uh, lots at Oak Grove, which is kind of shades of Costco looking, locating development where there are groves of oaks. The, the Kalapuan connection, the history and heritage, uh, we need an archaeological study of the Native American site. And the city has an understanding with the tribes that we're not gonna go, uh, rushing ahead with development when there's artifacts, there's a possible burial ground that we look at, we, we see. And those three hundred-year-old trees were planted by the, by the Kalapuan, Kalapuans apparently in the seventeen twenties. So they're in like an arrowhead, uh, um, shape pointing north uh, towards what we suspect is the burial ground. And, uh, that needs to be looked at very carefully, and we need to get the, maybe the Grand Ron tribe involved in advising us. So the denial recommendations for code violations, omissions, inaccuracies, they should redo the layout to completely miss the oaks. There's no excuse. Uh, they should redo the traffic study and address the impacts. We need an archaeological study of the Native American resources. We should respect the, the new city tree code for protections of the roots. And we should let the family and the court resolve this and save the farm. I believe the hearing is in May, the spring. So please, please deny this thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Any questions for Jeff?
I mean, yes, I'll ask the question. Thank you for testifying, Mr. James. How did, uh, the meeting on the tenth go, uh, when the, the, uh, developer showed up and talked to you guys?
Yeah, they did. They did show up and they gave us a brief presentation. Uh, Mr. Keough sat in the background, didn't say anything. Uh, we, we quizzed the developers, uh, the, um, engineers about why these huge discrepancies in the trees. You know, uh, we, as you know, uh, Councilor Phillips, we have a retired state forester on our board, and he did, he chaired our tree committee. We had a traffic committee, a tree committee, and land use committee. Um, uh, he, he, uh, looked at the, um, the, the arborist reports. He analyzed, uh, and provided, I think there's a copy of our spreadsheet in, in the, uh, in the eighteen-page report we've submitted. Hopefully you all will read it. Um, you know, why are those big discrepancies? Uh, it's, uh, partly because the, uh, the, the tree study, um, done in years ago was maybe sloppy or inaccurate.
Jeff, this was covered, uh, under the question from Mr. Phillips. Uh, this was what went on the tenth. You guys went over this with them?
Uh, we challenged that, we challenged them pretty hard on how many significant trees are there actually? And they said four. And our, our tree, uh, retired forester said, I think there's more than twenty. Uh, and then the land use, uh, chair said, well, why? If there's significant oak trees on the property and you can map them, why can't you miss, you've got a, a major street going straight through a three hundred, hundred-year-old oak tree with no excuse? Why can't you curve a linear, bend the, the, the road? I think the, this was the, um, the, the, uh, the new freeway, as we call it, going through the property. Um, why that couldn't just miss that one giant heritage tree? Uh, and then why locate clusters of lock, uh, lots, new lots and homes where there are oak groves? Uh, it is such basic, and I'm in the design business. When I take a property, I, I map the oak trees and then I locate my homes to miss the oak trees. It's pretty basic.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any further questions? Yeah, Jim.
Yeah, uh, thanks, Jeff, for coming down. I, um, I, I appreciate your, your longevity, especially here in Salem and the work you do. I, I've heard, um, heard you use the word precious when it comes to this piece of property. I've also heard that it's special, unique, and, and worth, worth saving. Would you agree with all that?
Absolutely. It, it is such a unique jewel in, in the middle of our neighborhood. Uh, and, um, if there's any way, uh, well, the neighborhood made a declaration, uh, months ago saying if it was all possible, this land should be, uh, designated and, and saved as open space. And there's ways to do that with, uh, with a family, uh, trust and with the help of the community. We have a Friends of Meyer Farm group now with almost two hundred members, each of which I believe would be willing to put up actual cash investments. In fact, few of them already have to help this cause and to preserve this, this farm. Maybe the city would help, uh, this, with this also.
Yeah, Jim.
That, that brings up my, my follow-up question, if I could. So special, so precious, but yet no action has been taken by anybody to preserve it. Why, why wait until now?
When, I believe when, when the father, uh, Mr. Meyer Senior, uh, died, he, he, um, entrusted the farm and the heritage and protection of the farm to, to sons. And you'll hear from the Meyer sons- And you'll hear from the Meyer sons, other Meyer sons later in this uh, hearing. Uh, and to, to look after the farm. Uh, instead, ten years after the death of the father, they turned around and decided on their own to sell the property and develop it. With, at the, uh, without the knowledge of the twenty-three other members of the family who were horrified when they found out. And now it is being fought in court, and that's none of our business. But we hope for the best, and we hope for future generations will, that farm will still be there.
Great. Thank you. Okay, Peter Meyer. Peter Meyer?
Hang on.
There he is.
Wait, are you, can you see me?
Yes.
Hey, this is quite a, uh, quite a good introduction, hearing, uh, Jeff and, and Mr. Lewis. This is exactly where I come in. Uh, as a family member, and I appreciate so much you guys taking this on. I was on the school board here, where I now live in upstate New York, and, and I know what it's like to be having, sitting in on three-hour meetings and listening to public testimony. So I appreciate all of you folks for doing this. Um, the, uh, let me cut to the chase if I can, because people have covered this very well. Jeff speaks, as Jeff speaks eloquently about the preciousness of the family farm, and obviously I grew up there, I was born there. Um, I know those trees. I know those trees intimately. And it hurts me every time I see a, 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 a graphic put up that shows the houses and then these little, these little drawings with a couple trees there. Um, this is, this is a, this is a place that is a very special place. Thirty acres of farm, of, uh, uh, of, of hayfields, of forests, of animals, of birds. Um, and the, my, my major point, and Heather Cohen covered this so well, uh, is about ownership. We were, we were, we were very shocked, most of the family. Was very shocked uh, to learn that a couple members, uh, who had become trustees of the trust uh, to answer uh, Jim's question about what, why hasn't anything been done, that lots have been done. My father worked on this farm. He pu, he, 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 he fought the city. Uh, for many years, I'm trying to run a road through the farm. He put, he rejected offers from developers time and time again. That was, that was the, the family preserving this, Mr. Lewis, and we have, and we tried so. We woke up one morning to find out the two of our, two of the family members had become co-trustees, and they had decided um, secretly to sell the farm, including a meeting with the city planning commission, uh, the planning board, uh, for a pre-app. Uh, and, and this, by the way, is all in my written testimony. I urge you to read the written testimony, which has the relevant documents to back all of this up, but as they, uh, the, the short answer to this uh, question about where we are now in this is we was robbed. The majority of the Meyer family does not want to sell the farm. The more, the majority of the beneficiaries of, of the trust do not want to sell the farm. And it is for that reason, as other people have said, it's in litigation. And I imagine it will be in litigation for a while. They just came out with an audit report, which finds significant problems with some of the trustees.
Time's up, Mr. Meyer. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Put me out of my misery.
No, no, it's a, it's really a, quite an interesting story, actually. Anyone else got any questions? Thank you very much. Harry Fuller?
Thank you. I'm a Salem resident, and I'm going to speak specifically about the forest that's part of this Meyer property. Two-hundred years ago, the Native Americans in the Willamette Valley managed oak forests for perpetuity. The forest provided food, wood, shelter for animals that the people depended on. Since farming invaded the valley, the oak forest here has been reduced to one percent of what it was before eighteen-twenty. Oaks are known for providing rich habitat for many animals and smaller plants. Squirrels, bluebirds, acorn woodpeckers, white-breasted nuthatches, all depend on oaks. From crows and wild turkeys down to little voles, the acorns are a prized meal. Mistletoe thrives in an oak forest. Its leathery berries last into winter, nourishing thrushes, bluebirds, and other berry eaters in the coldest time of the year. Oaks can be drought-resistant and live for centuries. Many of the oaks on this Meyer property are already older than anybody involved in this meeting. This is a precious, regenerating forest well on its way to maturity. At this time in history, when so many species are threatened with extinction, the climate is getting more extreme, hardy oaks should be valued simply for being alive. At a time when carbon in the atmosphere endangers us, birds, plants, a forest is a natural way to remove carbon from the air. Many climate sci, climate scientists are promoting tree planting around the world as a way to help reduce greenhouse gases and provide, perhaps soften the effects of climate change. To remove that forest for construction is to say, quote, "Personal profit today, to hell with the planet tomorrow," unquote. I spend time at Fairview Wetlands. That industrial park is rife with thousands of square feet of pavement, sidewalk, and buildings that are empty and unused. Why should we build more when we cannot use all that we already have? I drove up Court Street today to do something in downtown. Four huge buildings, for lease, empty, unused, perhaps unwanted. Would it not make more sense to replace or repurpose these buildings we already have that rather than cover more acres with pavement, sidewalk, and building? I would hope a majority of this council is able to understand that the environment your grandchildren will struggle with is far more important than somebody's short-term financial gain. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Fuller. Any questions for Mr. Fuller? Uh, Steve Sessa? He'll be followed by Charles Falk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. My name is Steve Sess. I live in Ward Prey, approximately two-hundred feet from the Meyer Farm on Sylvan Avenue. Worked for the US Department of Agriculture for over thirty-five years, working in the fruit and vegetable industry in every state, some territories, and about ten countries. I'm not here in official capacity, but I'm here to tell you I've seen what a property like this can do for the community and its residents. The current Meyer Family Farm has open fields that could be used to grow crops and tree fruit, two greenhouses that could be converted to hydroponic greenhouses supplying year-round vegetables. The combination of these two opportunities could produce an estimated seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand pounds of fruits and vegetables. It's enough to feed about a quarter of the annual needs of twenty thousand Salem residents. This is only a fraction of what the farm could be used for. The, the farm could be, have opportunities to provide for future farmers of America, America, to learn the opportunity to grow crops and the opportunity otherwise not, they would might, might not otherwise have. Provide a place for local school students to learn about farming and teach the importance of a thriving ecosystem. Allow experts in wetland restorations to store, to restore current wetlands and springs unidentified on the, in the, in the plan on the farm and provide environment for thousands of species to live in. Possibly work with the Oregon School, Oregon State University School of Forestry to expand the current Or- Oregon White Oak Grove to a healthy, thriving environmental wonder. All this while reducing greenhouse gases is a win for Salem and its residents. Please think about what's important to the future of Salem, Salem. Building something we can be proud of and provide for our residents for years to come or putting millions of dollars of profit in the pockets of developers and contractors. I urge you to vote no on the housing development of the Meyer Family Farm and allow the legacy of Mr. Meyer to live on. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Sess? Um, Charles Falk? Charles Falk? Kelly Hyatt?
Having problems with the, uh, broken, broken Peter. Okay. Thank you very much. My name is Charles Falk. I've been with Ward, uh, three. I'd like to echo uh, what Heather and Jeff said. Uh, they're far more polished than I am. All of this is my personal, uh, you cannot start your video because the host has stopped it, okay? Let's see. Anyway. Meyer Farm's fate is nothing new. It's been done before. Developers want to take. Well, let's put it this way, Joseph Waldo, a hundred and seventy-five years ago, claimed the land that Meyer Farm stands on. And for seventy-five years, it's been cared for by the Meyer family. Now developers want to take it and bake it into a street and houses that no one can afford. This has been done before because in nineteen, in eighteen-fifty, settlers took the Willamette Valley away from the Kalapulian natives who lived there for thousands of years. We, the settlers promised them two million dollars and gave them nothing. The natives had no choice. Today, the developers will probably make conservatively around twelve million dollars by my figures for those a hundred and thirty-nine houses. That's after taxes, buildings, and, and so forth, or six times the valley's worth back in the uh, eighteen hundreds. And while they're doing that, they'll be tearing apart a Kalapulia burial site untouched for hundreds of years. So I'm here to basically echo what the others have said. We, it's, it's, we need places like Meyer Farms. We don't need more construction and more houses, more development, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Falk? Kelly Hyatt?
Okay, hello. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Oh, good.
Uh, can't start the video.
We can't start the video here. There we go. Thank you all, uh, City Council for your time and the mayor. Appreciate it. Um, I am a neighbor to the uh, farm, and I've got concerns about traffic, uh, specifically the Hill Rose Street, and I can't let my daughter ride her bike along that area. It's unsafe as it is, forty miles per hour, but we all see people race. We hear them race at all hours of the night on that road. So with a major development and a left-turn lane that's gonna be safe is not gonna be safe. It's a dangerous intersection. There's also Albert and the surrounding areas like Mandy, and that report that came out by the um, uh, developer didn't quite address the concerns around the surrounding neighborhoods, all of us who live near the front of the farm. And that's concerning. Also, the congestion uh, involving the Costco development, the Fairview development, apartments behind there. None of that is in consideration to the traffic and all the cars will be passing through there. Um, plus, if you look at the topographical map, you see the trees, right? Take a look at that map, and you can see those trees that show, that looks like an arrow due north. And that wasn't planted by birds. So there is a significant heritage aspect there too. And I would love to see that turned into educational center, and as previously discussed, agricultural farmland too as well. So it's really hard to see. Um, neighbors also got flooded ninety-six, lives right next to me. He spoke earlier. I'm afraid that with the development, all that concrete on farmland will just pile right back into my backyard and get flooded. And I don't want that to happen, nor do all my neighbors. So there's a lot of concerns. The tree count's off. We all know that. I sat there during the meeting on the tenth, and I watched uh, the developers and engineers stumble over their tree count. And it's kind of embarrassing. It doesn't look like they really fix that much. Cannot let this happen as a community. Costco tree cut was embarrassing. We lost a lot of trees over the Costco development. Salem Hospital and the School for the Blind um, was a sham. There's a lot of trees cut there for this. Same thing's gonna happen to our backfield. The developer is gonna cut more trees accidentally, or however so. And that's damaging for everything in the community. My daughter loves looking at these trees and seeing all the animals inside of them. Some of them all protected too. So appreciate it. Thank you all for your time tonight. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Hyatt? Okay, uh, Todd Prager?
I'm with the applicant's team.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Rachel Atchison?
Yeah, hi. Good evening, Council. My name is Rachel Atchison, and I'm a resident of Ward Three. I appreciate the chance to speak to you about my opposition to this proposed development of the Meyer property. There are others here tonight who are pointing out the flaws in the traffic study and in the measurement of trees, the active dispute as to ownership and the sad loss of history and heritage. I also ask you to maintain the wider view regarding climate change. In recommending approval of this project, the Planning Administration states that loss of wildlife habitat is not a criterion. And in regards to our climate plan, it is currently allowed. Well, just because something can be done, doesn't mean that it should be done. The simple fact is trees sequester carbon, and we need to be preserving forests at every opportunity, no matter where it is located. True urban density is not obtained with single-family home subdivisions. Only developer profits are. Short-term benefits from property tax revenue are dwarfed by the cost of mitigating disastrous climate events. It is a game-losing strategy to let this project slide under the goalpost rule at the last minute, and it's not in the best interest of our community's current or future health and welfare. I contend that if this development goes forward, when you all have the power to use a broader vision and stop it, the resulting legacy will not be one that this council will be proud of. I do thank you for your service and for listening to my comments. I hope you all find the courage to do the right thing tonight and reverse the planning administrator's decision. Thank you.
Any, any questions for Ms. Atchison? Okay, Jenny Hyatt?
Hello, I'm Jenny Hyatt. I, um, my husband just spoke, but I live along Roseway Court. We have approximately a hundred and eighty feet of our property that borders the farm. We have a great view. We can see the beautiful protected oak trees and animal species that I do believe that some are endangered. Um, I wanted to present to you, City Council, you've all seen the petitions. Um, as of today, I emailed you, um, the remaining ones that I collected in the neighborhood, and there were a hundred and fifty people in our neighborhood and in the community that oppose this development. And I hope that you all will consider reading through the notes, um, and I know that you all have read through our letters. Um, I want to start off with my primary concern about this application as property ownership. I and many others in the city want to know why this application was approved in the first place. Um, the Meyer family is still active in the court system and establishing the proper trustees of the land. The public is aware that most of the family disapproves of the farm being sold. And common sense would tell you that you should only approve an application if you own the amp, the land. Kehoe Northwest Properties does not own the land yet. When it comes to wildlife, I am trying to set an example for the younger generation and for my daughter that cutting down protected trees is not okay. As we've discussed in this meeting, that replacing these, you know, giant oak trees with one-inch trees, that's not helpful, especially for climate change and sustainability in our community. Um, the engineering reports regarding the protected trees of the land and the traffic problems in the surrounding neighborhoods um, needs to be corrected. The traffic analysis um, uh, impact report also needs to be done. Um, they only address the Hill Figger and Commercial and Hill Rose and Battle Creek intersections. As I live in this neighborhood, I walk around the streets every day, and I have to deal with the high traffic and the high speeds. This includes Albert Drive, Mandy Avenue, Suntree Drive, and other parts of Pringle Road. Um, I, as my husband said before, we won't even let our daughter ride her bike on Hill Rose for fear that she is going to get run over by a car if someone hits the, a gas too far. Um, the only, the plans to change traffic with this development is only um, going to make conditions worse. It's not going to make them better. So I hope as you, City Council- So I hope as you City Councilors and Mayor Bennett thoughtfully consider mine and the community's concerns and deny Kehoe Northwest Properties' application. We are the ones who raise our families in this neighborhood. We spend our time walking, biking, and driving the roads I've discussed. I hope you all consider our issues as concerned citizens, and you all can make an impactful decision to prevent future accidents or fatalities in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Hyatt? Whoever's handling the clock, move it on to page one. You've got it buried back in there somewhere, and I'm having a hard time following it. So whoever's got it, move it up. James Santana. And if any of you councilors, if any of you want to take a break, you give me the high sign.
I'm ready for a break anytime, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we'll do it after Mr. Santana. We'll take about five, seven minutes, something like that.
Thank you.
Okay, you bet.
Great, thank you, Mayor and councilors. Can you see my screen okay?
Yes.
My name is James Santana. I lived in Salem for seven years before getting my masters at the Yale School of Forestry and Environmental Studies. And I'm here as a private citizen to talk about the oaks. This image that you see here is the property with showing all the significant oaks that have been described by the applicant in some way or another. This includes the most current information of the 55 that have been identified as of Friday of last week when the new sort of identification of significant trees came in. And, you know, most importantly is this four-and-a-half acre Oregon white oak woodlands here that has the bulk of the significant trees and is probably, you know, it's the last of the last 10% of Oregon white oak woodlands remaining in the Willamette Valley, and probably some of the very last that even are in the, in the city of Salem. Just to respond to there, Counselor Phillips and Counselor Stapleton's questions about comparing the 2019 from the 2021. I don't have time to go through this right now, but this is a partial list of the trees that moved from insignificant to significant on Friday, and this is the difference in the diameters that were noted between the 2019 base tree survey that the application is based on and the 2021, and, you know, Oregon white oaks don't grow six inches in two years' time. This shows the, in green, the significant trees that were going to be proposed to be preserved, and then, in this case, the nine by my count of the trees on private property that are going to be removed. And at first blush, you know, even though SRC 808015 says that no significant trees will be removed, staff said that these can be removed, these nine, and, you know, at first blush, okay, that's 82% of the significant trees being preserved. Seems okay, but if you take out the significant trees that are within the Lot 139 area to remain, the picture looks a little different. So then you're removing nine of the 21 significant trees that are on the property. You're actually removing 43% of the ones that are being on the development site. Here again, this is the 29 that are on the Lot 139 area to remain, and if you feather in the shadow plot that shows the street connections and utility connections for future development, you'll see that a lot of these actually are not going to survive. They'll be taken out as well, and that's inconsistent with SRC 205030H, which says that when you have large lots like these.
Mr. Santana, I'm sorry, your time's up. Are there any questions? Yes, Counselor Anderson.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Santana, for coming in. This is extremely helpful. The screenshots that you were showing us were done by the developer. So I'm just curious, as do we have these screenshots available? I'm seeing if staff, we do too, or did you just develop them tonight for the testimony?
Yeah, the base background surveys from the applicant, but the dots that I've annotated are, you know, is based on my research of whatever plans that have been submitted.
Is there some way, and I don't know if this is possible right now, because we don't know if we make a decision tonight, but if we for some reason don't make a decision tonight, is that some sort of information you can get to the council?
Yeah, these are included as exhibits in the written testimony that I submitted.
Okay, it's already there. That's what I want to know. It's already there. Okay.
Yeah, yeah, you can refer to those and then some of the others here as well.
Okay, and the final question, excuse me, Mr. Mayor. When you showed me that, when we saw the aerial-like drone picture, I said, man, those main trees look like they're in the 3.64 acres. You saw that it was 4.5 and the 3.64 is where the farm still is. And then you kind of answered my question in that that could be developed, and if that were developed at some point, a lot of trees would have to go under the no reasonable alternative to put a street in. Is that a correct assessment of things?
Yeah, exactly. So if you see the screen now, or maybe it's not showing it anymore, but it it does show that once the shadow plot of the remaining, the area to remain on Lot 139 is, you know, is presumably developed down the road, you know, really what you're looking at here, the big picture of the site, is that you're removing 24 of the 50 significant trees on the property ultimately. And that's 48% of the significant oaks that are intended, you know, not one is supposed to be preserved. And meanwhile, you know, it is determined that there is a reasonable design. You can see where these lots fall. It's all about this Hill Ficker Extension Road, which is a collector B. It has a design speed of 25 miles per hour. Well, you can change the alignment of that significantly because it's such a low-speed street. It's got a lot of flexibility about where it could go. And there's really no reason. I mean, this is like this, if you can see, is a perfectly reasonable design alternative that would result in zero significant trees being removed from the private property. And why this has not been considered is sort of, I don't understand.
Okay. We're going to take a, what?
Before we take the break, Mr. Mayor, can I ask a brief follow-up question?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Santana, for being here. This graphical information is incredibly helpful for me personally, as I, you know, consider my thoughts. My specific question is, in terms of the discrepancy between the 2019 and the follow-up, you know, tree survey that was done by the applicant, I mean, does it ring true to you that it's purely growth, or what are your thoughts on that aspect of it, that discrepancy?
Sure, yeah. No, I don't think it's growth at all. I, these are very dense hardwoods. They do not grow six inches in a year. You know, some of the trees, the ones that were shown on Friday is having changed, changed 13 inches in the course of two years. That's just not realistic. The base tree survey that this entire application is based on is fundamentally flawed, and it's old. The city asked for a revised one. The applicant provided a updated inventory, but provided no measurements. And ultimately, under the pressure of the Neighborhood Association, it sounds like the applicant went out and actually did measure some of the oaks, not all of them or all of the trees, measured some of them and determined that, oh, wait a second, actually, we, there are many more significant oaks on this property than we originally reported in the application. And, you know, my concern is, you know, SRC 300210A says that all information accompanying the application shall be completely correct as be applicable facts. And the fact of the matter is that you don't get, you don't have all the information. You don't have all the measurements of all the trees. You haven't been provided with that. So it's hard to imagine that the application can be approved.
Okay, very good. We're going to take an eight-minute break. We'll be back here at 9:22. Carrying back to order, and first person up is Annie Morton.
Good evening. I'm going to be very brief because everyone here has spoken so eloquently. I live on Albert Drive, which is the street that is adjacent to the Meyer Farm, and my only point I'm going to say, which seems so small right now, is that I've lived here 30 years, and we have had traffic issues for those 30 years. Multiple traffic studies, including one just before COVID hit. We're looking at putting speed humps because to mitigate the traffic and unsafe, the volume and the speed. There were no funds. We were approved, but there were no funds. But it just surprised me when I read through all the packet and the Kittleson Traffic Impact Analysis that there was no mention of the traffic issue here, and my understanding is when you do a traffic impact analysis, if there are concerns in the area, those should be included in in the analysis. So everyone else who has spoken so eloquently, thank you, and also thank you to you, City Council, in preparing for this. I realize the daunting task you have. So thank you for your work and thank you for considering my testimony.
Great. Thank you very much. Yes, Trevor.
Thank you, Annie Morton, for coming out and talking tonight. I believe I saw in the submitted testimony that it was your neighborhood that had a kind of rallied around an event that happened. Was there a fatality at an intersection near where you live?
There was, and it was at that base of the 12th Street hill that you talked about. That's not a, not a real street. It's at the intersection of Albert and 12th, and what was really amazing about that was we wanted to get stop signs there, but city felt that the grade was too high. We couldn't have people stop on Albert Drive when the grade was so steep because we live on a hill. Well, after the fatality, a traffic study was done, and they took a look at this and they said, this has got a site distance restriction. This has to be a four-way stop. So I'll be honest, it was, it was, it was great working with the city and the people who came out and did the analysis, because when it was all said and done, we got the four-way stop, which hasn't taken all of the unsafe behavior away, but there had been no other fatalities, and it definitely was an improvement.
And then just to clarify, on your position to this application, you're in opposition. Is that correct?
I think that, yes, I believe that we need to deny this plan at this point. It sounds like it's incomplete, and it sounds like it's missing pieces, and it feels like we need to deny it at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Brianna Kamstra.
Hello.
Hello.
Hi, I worked on the Meyer Farm from 2019 through 2020. I have since then adopted the animals from the farm. I am also personally a neighbor that lives along the fence line of the farm on 12th Street since 2004 and enjoys the little slice of country in the city. And my view of the great oak trees along 12th Street. My family has a history as being a neighbor to the Meyer Farm since the early 1950s. I really appreciate the time I spent on the farm over the years and hold my memories dear to my heart. I oppose this request for the development for many reasons. The historical Meyer Farm is not only a beautiful place to see, but also so many different wildlife species depend on this land, including several deer, which can be seen daily. I hope this wonderful historical farm can be preserved for future generations to see our local history. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Brianna. Any questions? Elizabeth Backer.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, so I just lost my testimony. I am going to sacrifice, if I can pull it up, part of my original testimony to address some comments about updates to the tree report made by Ms. Arnold at the beginning of this meeting. I seriously question that there was actually a new survey done since December. I believe what has actually happened is that the applicant has just updated the original 2018 inventory with data from the first R Rooster Park, which is important because they are not including trees that were originally listed under 10 inches and therefore not considered trees, which now should be included in the total tree count. And they are also not including numerous trees that have either been cut, have fallen or otherwise removed since 2019, including many from the ice storm last year. This report is just not accurate at all. So considering vegetation and trees on the site, I submitted another report today that outlines five imperiled habitats. And actually, it's 26 federal or state-listed imperiled species that are identified on the farm by the Department of Fish and Wildlife. If the city were currently in compliance with state Goal Five requirements, those habitats would already be protected by Fish and Wildlife mitigation policies. And I don't know, maybe there's some sort of emergency enforcement that could be applied here. I'm not a lawyer, I have no idea. But I, you know, I understand that there is a purpose for the urban growth boundary. And I know that Salem has a housing need. Housing is not the only need that exists. Developers have options and wildlife does not. On a separate note, I would like to say for the record that I do believe a landowner should have the right to do what they want with their property within the law, of course. But I am very concerned about the ethical factor and the potential conflict of the city, this, for the city by even allowing this application to have been submitted when the true ownership has not been settled in court. It kind of reads that the city might be forcing the Meyer family off of land that's rightfully theirs. Honestly, we shouldn't even be here. Anyway, thank you for all that you do and I do hope you deny this application.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Again, timekeeper, move that clock to the front page. It really is very difficult to deal with this, bouncing back and forth. Helen Caswell, Helen, haven't seen you in a long time. Are you here?
Okay, I'm in, I think.
There you are.
Um, hi, so.
Just a second, Helen.
Helen Caswell, Ward Three?
Yeah, just a second. Don't fill the whole page, just put, put it, put it up in a small usable fashion.
What am I pushing?
Not you. It's our timekeeper, can't seem to figure this out. Okay, go ahead, Ellen.
Hi, so I'm Helen Caswell, Ward Three. And I'd first like to say, I really commend City Council, what I've seen today, all these hours and this commitment and this actual stamina is really impressive to me. And I appreciate your work very much. I'm in opposition to the application. I'd like to, I'm going to be very, very brief. First of all, I don't think it's a NIMBY situation at all. This, this benefits, this, this changes the whole city, really. And the two little pictures that you saw at the first, those two dingy pictures, in no way resemble the Meyer Farm. With its, with its hill and with its stream and with its trees and its beautiful open space. This is a really beautiful piece of property. And you know, it's been almost completely unchanged since before Salem even became a city. And so for those reasons, I would recommend that, in taking the long run, since there's so many problems with the application that you've already heard of, that we consider the city's open space goal, Goal Five, and also our new climate change goals. And the destruction of, of all this, all these trees, it just completely blocks that kind of, of forward thinking. And, and I don't know of any piece of property in the city of Salem that so could support open space and climate change goals, especially not, not so beautifully. It's a really gorgeous piece of property. Thank you for your time.
Great, thank you, Helen.
Just, this is, Helen, you know, thanks for coming out tonight. You know, what was like the main motivation? I'm surprised to see you tonight, so grateful that you made the time to come out. What motivated you specifically, what motivated you to speak tonight the most?
You know, our country and our world are losing things that are precious and can't be regenerated. This can't be regenerated. You can't develop this, this land and, and then say, oh, well, let's create a 300-year-old forest over here. No, it's here now and it's grown organically. And when I know about our ultimate goals and our beautiful new climate action plan, I just think that, and there's more to say about this too, but I'll be brief. I just think it's, it's a great wrong.
Thank you, thank you very much, Helen. Dave McKenna. Did I cut you off?
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I, I think a lot of people said eloquently the things that need to be said. I think it is a great injustice, the conniving of the two brothers to overtake the rest of the family and, and try to sell the farm as they are. I'm in opposition to it. My main interest is, is the traffic impacts that it will have on Sunnyside Road, which has not been included in the traffic impact analysis. And I feel that both the intersection of Sunnyside Road and Hillficker and Sunnyside Road and Idlewood should, should be considered. The intersection of Hillficker and Sunnyside is already a bottleneck and congestion will increase considerably when the new section of Hillficker, Hillrose connects with Battle Creek Road. Traffic already backs up on Sunnyside Road Southeast while trying to get onto the short section of Hillficker west of Commercial. Cars often have to sit through light changes and get through this intersection in either direction. I strongly recommend widening Hillficker and improving the intersection of Commercial and Sunnyside be required as part of this project's approval. The proposed development of Myers Farm will create an east-west corridor for traffic between Liberty Road and Battle Creek Road. This corridor will use Idlewood Drive, Sunnyside Road and Hillficker Lane. This will create additional traffic and safety issues at the intersections of Idlewood and Sunnyside and Hillficker and Sunnyside. For this reason, I believe these two additional intersections should be added to the development's traffic impact analysis. Hillficker Lane is the existing corridor for traffic heading north on Sunnyside. It is typically used for the transition of traffic heading north from Sunnyside to Commercial Street. There is no existing turning lanes from either Sunnyside onto Hillficker or in the westerly direction from Hillficker turning onto Sunnyside. The length of Hillficker between Commercial and Sunnyside is limited to approximately seven cars. During rush hour traffic, this intersection already becomes backed up and dangerous, especially when it's used by trucks. With the addition of these homes at Myers Farm and other developments in the areas nearby, it will become a traffic nightmare. And signaling with coordination to the intersection of Commercial should be required as needed. Thank you again for the council taking time to consider us.
Thank you very much, Mr. McKenna. Anyone have any questions? Okay, and finally, our last testimony is from Nick Meyer.
Video seems to be blocked. Okay, there we go. Honorable City Council members, I'm speaking today to voice my opposition to this project. Thank you for your time. I realize there are many considerations in this matter and that you have the burden of deciding what's best for Salem, the neighborhood, its economy and its future. Now, I'm calling on you to dig deep and to reflect and to stop this subdivision. There's ongoing litigation. The Myers have offered a financial solution to preserve the property. The property is invaluable, is invaluable to the neighbors for its open space aesthetics and benefits to the surrounding residents. The Meyer Farm began with an Oregon land claim number 3308, in 1852. The barn house is historic and it can be saved. I grew up visiting the Meyer Farm twice most years until the age of 16, when I moved to the farm and began living with my grandfather. My grandfather was a unique man. He was a disciplinarian. He was deliberate with his words and was respected by all. He was a medal-winning veteran and a founding member of the Queen of Peace Catholic Church nearby. And he became my guardian then. Before I moved to Salem, we agreed on a contract that described my weekly chores and the minimum grades I would have to maintain if allowed to stay on the farm. That period taught me not only about integrity, responsibility and discipline, but also about nature. As a young 16-year-old, I kept the window of my second-story room open at night to hear the sounds of the farm. It made things less lonely and I came to love the sounds of nature. And then the farm's dawn chorus, crows cawing, woke me up. And soon after, the neighing of the horses told me it was time to get up, start chores and to clean the sables. I attended South Salem High School. And at the school bus stop midway along the upper hayfield, other kids would comment and idolize the farm. It took me years to understand why. Grandfather went to church every Sunday and I would borrow one of his jackets and ties so that I could attend. He had many routines and after church each Sunday, he'd build a fire and begin reading the Statesman Journal newspaper. I would start, start chores and liked Sundays because there was enough time for bigger projects. I could ride their three-wheeler down into the oak grove, check the fences along the perimeter or go to the lower woods and see if foxes had left their den. That nature is still present at 4540 Pringle Creek Road Southeast.
Thank you very much. Time's up. Any questions for Nick? Yes, Trevor.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Meyer, for being here and sharing your experience. What is your understanding of the situation with the dispute within the family? I mean, as brief as you can.
That it's under dispute, but there's been a cash offer to allow for the property to be preserved. A cash offer has, would allow the developer to, to step back and for all encumbrances to be resolved.
And then my, my simple follow-up, is it, but it's still in the courts, is that your understanding?
Correct, yes.
Okay, any further questions? Okay, well, thank you very much. That takes us to, where's, where's Dan Atchison? Are you here, Dan? Dan, do we talk with Aaron Panko and then the applicant has rebuttal time or is it vice versa?
A chance for questions of staff and applicant's rebuttal. And then, once you move to deliberations, whether you do it tonight or at a subsequent meeting, you can still ask questions of staff, we just are limited to facts and the record at that point.
Okay, great. Okay, this is an opportunity then to ask Mr. Panko questions. I, I had to, I'm gonna ask just a couple, if I may. Aaron, what is the situation with the archaeological and historical review of this property?
Sure, so the, the property, it, it doesn't appear on any of our registries. It's not listed as a historic resource. So, yeah, we're aware of some of the conversations and the potential for artifacts. The applicant did state that they're doing an inadvertent discovery plan. So if they do come across any artifacts, they'll be in contact with the State Historic Preservation Office, the folks at the city, folks at the tribes, to discuss anything that's found.
Okay, because there were certain, several allegations that there is a burial ground on that site. And I want to be sure we are fully, fully responding and vetting those concerns. The traffic study, did it deal with compounding issues out there that, with the development of Costco, with the number of housing? I mean, as you look at this piece of property, it sits in the middle of an awful lot of housing. Did that, did the traffic study deal with compounding traffic issues, do you know?
I'll be looking to Tony Martin, if he's here, maybe he can give a response.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. The traffic study, they adjusted their traffic numbers to, to adjust for COVID, 41% and 24%, I believe it is. And then they applied a background growth rate of one and a half percent to account for some of the development. It's not realistic for them to account for development of every piece of property that could be developed in the vicinity.
Okay, and that's part of what's being discussed here is?
Yeah, there's a lot of things that were discussed that, hey, you didn't consider this, you didn't consider this. And, and some of those aren't in the, in the works yet. Some of them are in, but we didn't require a traffic study with them. So I couldn't give them, you know, that becomes background. You know, if it's something that's developed and didn't require a traffic study, then there was no way for us to, to, that becomes background growth.
Okay, and Aaron, there was some discussion of, of who owns the property and who can sell it. Is that, is that a resolved issue that allows this to proceed into the planning process?
It is a question that we had for the applicant and they have provided us evidence through the court that they, they have authority to sign for this application.
Hey. Counselor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I have a question for Ms. Anderson Oatley, if she's available. Hello, I didn't want you to sit through this whole meeting and not get some family. So I, we, we've heard a lot of testimony tonight about trees and about different, differing information about those trees. And I know that you and I had a conversation about trees and about differing information on trees. I don't feel like I have a clear sense of what trees are actually on this property and how big they are. Is there a way that, is there some sort of mechanism within this process that we could actually figure out how many trees there are and how big they are?
Sure, I mean, city staff could go out to verify. It's not our normal process, so we don't, you know, Aaron hasn't been tasked with going, going on-site and measuring the trees generally. You know, we visit a site and if, you know, they have white oaks and we can tell that they've said they have oaks and we see oaks, then we're gonna take their word for it. We could obviously ask for an updated inventory. We could ask for the city urban forester to go out and confirm the significant trees. It wouldn't be reasonable to ask him to do a full survey of every, you know, tree on the property. But we could, you know, ask him to go out and confirm that all the significant trees have been identified, just to make sure that none are missed, since that seems to be a concern.
And, and just to follow up, Mr. Mayor, if, if we were to do that, would we, would we do that while the hearing's still open? Or would we close the hearing and, and still leave the record open? Or how would, how would we make that happen?
What do you think, Dan?
I, uh, I'll, I'll get to you, Lisa, in a second, because I may, I'm gonna refer back to you. But um, depending on how long that process would take, you know, you can, you can close the hearing tonight or at a future date and, and keep the record open to allow written evidence and testimony. And so if city staff were to go out and do some type of verification, um, we could provide a, a written supplement. And then the, all the parties, including the applicant, would have a chance to respond to that in writing.
So that the staff counting or doing an inventory represents a, a new evidence being brought to the table on this and really keeps the, the issue open, or what?
Correct. So depending on, on what direction staff would go to verify the, the updated information that the applicant has provided. Um, you know, we're gonna summarize that, provide some data in a report, and that would be evidence.
Okay, okay.
So my, my goal, I mean, I don't feel like I know how many trees there are and how big they are currently. And so that's, my goal is to figure that out before we make any sort of decision. And so I liked your idea, your suggestion of sending the forester out and confirming the significant trees. I, to me, that seems like the most reasonable thing to do. And so that, that's uh, where I'd like to head. But I, I thank you for answering my question. That gives me something to think about.
So what, what we would do in order to accomplish uh, Councilor Hoy's goal here, which makes a lot of sense, is uh, we would keep the hearing open for what?
To provide adequate time for staff to do that, and I'd like to hear from Lisa and perhaps Public Works um, on the Urban Forester to, to know how long that would take, given his other responsibilities.
Okay. Can you supply us, Lisa, with a?
I would say he'd leave at least a few weeks because, you know, he does have other responsibilities and, and.
But it'd be done by the twenty-fourth of January, do you think?
Um.
And presented to us as a staff report?
Maybe it might be better the first meeting in February.
Okay, that's good.
The council needs to adopt a written order by the second meeting in February, I believe, to make the hundred and twenty days.
Okay, so we'd, we'd have time by then to, okay, at least get some resolution on this tree issue.
Yes.
Um, Aaron, is there any farming going on on this property right now?
I'm not aware.
Has there, when was the last time this, this property was farmed?
That might be a question for the applicant. I'm not sure on that.
Okay, I'd like to, I'd like to hear when it was last farmed. It, it looks pretty fallow, and I, I just wasn't sure as I listened to people talk about it as a food-producing farm and all of that, it, it, whether it had gone unfallow. Okay. Yes, Tom?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, a, a couple uh, comments on what was said, and then I have some questions for staff too. With respect to uh, Councilor Hoy suggested and yours suggested, and uh, the way I looked at it, the, the reason we had the hearing today is because our here, our one-twenty days was tomorrow at first, and then it was backed up to, to February sometime, and now it's backed up to March second. So I think, uh, I'm looking at Dan and Lisa, we could continue the hearing or do whatever if we decided to do that till February twenty-eighth. And that still gives, uh, it's still within the agreements, uh, extensions that were agreed upon uh, or concessions that were made by the applicant. That's one, and I don't need to discuss that anymore, but that's just a possibility.
Would that make you comfortable with that February fourth, or whatever it is, first meeting in February? Okay.
Yeah, so we can meet the first meeting in February or the second meeting in February.
Okay.
You do, the fourteenth or the twenty-eighth.
Okay.
If I can interject here, so typically the way we'll do it is, is when council actually deliberates and votes, we will come back with a written decision that represents council's vote. That takes time to write findings that can be defended at Luba in the Court of Appeals. So um, to, to delay a final oral decision until the second meeting in February doesn't give us time to do that, so.
You need a decision on the first, okay, is that?
Yeah, I'm fine with that. That just gives us a little more time than two weeks from now.
Well, the main thing is, can, can Lisa and her staff count trees by then?
Then, I'm looking at this, and I, I, it, it was in our packet, and it's called Meyer Family Farm History and Legacy.
Yeah.
This.
I don't know, it's great though, wasn't it?
Yeah, yeah, who did it? Do you know, Lisa, Aaron, do you know who did this?
I think that came with some morning side testimony. I'm not sure where they got.
That's wonderful.
Okay, yeah, okay, well, yeah, it's attached. On the back of it is a morning side neighborhood letter, so I guess somebody at morning side did it. Then, uh, and this is more a question, I think, for Dan. I, I, I know the court has said, you know, that the, the, the one side of the family, the two brothers or whoever they are, two family members, they've got control of the trust right now, and as things stand now, they can transfer, they can do whatever they want. But am I correct in thinking that the litigation isn't over? That it, there's gonna be some final uh, uh, decision on, uh, in May? And so this might be kind of in the nature of a preliminary injunction, or, you know, I'm, that's a weak analogy, but something like that? The status quo is that the trust is, is, is um, under the trustee ship of the people who want to sell. But that status quo could change in May?
I haven't been following the litigation, so I can't speak to that. All we know is that the, the folks who have the authority under the trust have signed off on the application.
Okay, and the court's giving them that authority at least when they sign. Okay. Then, um, uh, oh, the traffic question, the cumulative traffic question were already asked by the mayor, except that uh, uh, what I think Mr. Martin said was, well, we can't look and say, here's another area for future develop, here's another area for future development. We can't consider those. But the Costco is gonna be developed. I mean, it's there. So it, it, I guess this is a question for either Mr. Martin or uh, Lisa Anderson Ogilvy. Can, in fact, we consider any traffic studies done for Costco in this? Then my final one is Mr. Santana. The stuff that he showed us, is all of that in the record? You know, I'm talking about the aerial diagrams where here are the trees, and then if you develop the three-point-six-four acres, you take out more trees. And I think the, the, the switching of the road, you know, you can move the road at uh, kind of north and west. I think I saw that, but I don't know if the rest of the stuff is in the record. And if not, I'd love to see it in the record, and I think that can happen if we hold the hearing open. Those are my comments right now and questions, if anybody knows about the traffic studies.
Mr. Mayor, could I interject before we get?
Yes, you certainly can.
Thank you, I apologize. I move that we extend the city council meeting until ten-thirty.
Yeah.
Second.
Second by Nordike. If there are, uh, recorder, please call the roll.
Councilor Hoy?
Hi.
Councilor Nordike?
Hi.
Councilor Lewis?
Hi.
Councilor Stapleton?
Hi.
Councilor Anderson?
Hi.
Councilor Phillips?
Hi.
Councilor Leung?
Hi.
Councilor Gonzalez?
Hi.
Mayor Bennett?
Hi, okay, we'll go till ten-thirty, and then you can try that again. Keep that in mind, folks. We're, we're aiming at a time now. Uh, okay, have you gotten, do you feel, okay?
I put my questions out there. I don't, the only answer I really don't have is about Santana's site map, is that in the record, and can we consider Costco? Those are the only two questions that aren't answered.
Well, they were.
I can, hi, this is Tony Martin, city, city traffic engineer. Um, the, the Costco study that was done in twenty-eighteen assumed five percent of their traffic going north on Battle Creek. And um, our, our standards require studying the intersections that have fifty or more vehicles going through an intersection. And as that traffic goes north, some will peel off on Reed Road, some will go into the neighborhood. So we would have never gotten that traffic far enough. However, comma, however, an additional fifty vehicles in the PM peak hour would make virtually no difference to the operation of that intersection.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Tony. Okay. Yes, Trevor?
Yeah, this question is, I think, for uh, Tony Martin. Um, do you, are you able to pull a graphic up that shows what the improved intersection of, you know, what is now Hill Rose but might future be a Hill Ficker and Battle Creek Pringle Corner? The community had some significant concerns about that one.
Uh, I do not have that ability. Mr. Panko could bring up that.
Okay, and then my questions, uh, while that's being loaded, my question specifically is, I want to uh, understand what about the left-hand turns? Left-hand turns, it's my understanding, are considered more dangerous. So what are we doing to make it safer to turn left coming out of, you know, what would be either Hill Rose or Hill Ficker? Um, and then turning left from Battle Creek into that uh, new subdivision? What are, do we have dedicated left-hand turns? What are we doing to make that safe?
Yes and yes. So uh, the plan is, and, and was identified in the traffic study that they would construct a northbound left-turn lane on Battle Creek to turn left on the Hill Ficker. It'll be located, is that the intersection? Yes. That's not a very good graphic, but the, the, the section of Battle Creek there will be widened. So that left-turn lane will, that northbound left turn will actually be where the, the southbound through lane is. And then the through lane will be shifted further to the west. On the outbound direction uh, from Hill Ficker out to Battle Creek, there will be a separate left and a separate right turn lane as you approach the intersection.
And then with the, the four concerns that the community member from, from this area that spoke like fourth or fifth, he had four concerns. Do you feel like that those have all been addressed in this?
Well, some of them, um, uh, one of the comments was that we should do a speed study and, and consider the actual speed that people are driving. And that's not the way that we design things. I mean, we, given if it's posted forty, that's the speed that people should be going. You know, if people are driving seventy, do we design our roads for seventy miles an hour? We just don't have that kind of, um, that kind of money to build everything for somebody that's speeding and breaking the law. So forty is the appropriate design speed. The intersection, the site distance will all be, uh, it will be met. I mean, that's not a, that's not even a question. It, you know, we will ensure that all of the, the site distance requirements are met.
So the, uh, thank you for answering those, those questions. So this intersection would be considered standard or close enough to standard to not be called out? My, my understanding is that there, we're asking, or this application is asking for an exception to normal standards on Twelfth Street, and then there was one other part of this, um, wh- wh- which other road was it that's not standard?
Hill Ficker. So the, the design exceptions that they're requesting is the grade on Twelfth Street, which is quite steep. Um, in order to meet the grade, we would have to take the hill down and have a significant adverse effect to the homes on the west side. Because we would have to take the grade of the street down, and the driveways would be about vertical. Um, the other design exceptions are, um, for collector streets. We typically design them for thirty-five miles an hour, so the curves are much flatter. They're requesting a, a design exception to allow for twenty-five mile-an-hour speed limit to have sharper curves to help uh, with some traffic calming and slowing things down and making it work a little better through the neighborhood.
Okay. Any, any other? Yes, Councilor Leung?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I have a traffic question. Uh, might be the same person. Um, can you put up that map one more time again, please?
This map here?
Um, it was the one that was a mo, that was showing a moment ago, the, I guess, yes, thank you. It had like the Hill Ficker, um, so just to understand what exactly is happening, because I'm looking at a Google map too. Hill Ficker will not be connected to, to Hill Rose. Like, where exactly is it going to be connected at? Because I'm, the one I'm looking at, like, there's Battle Creek, and then there's that little um, random Hill Rose, and that's right, right at the very edge where there's a Salem Mission Faith Ministries. So where will Hill Ficker be connecting to Hill Rose?
So Aaron, if you, if you put your uh, your mouse right there, we'll, we're, so what's happening is Hill Rose is turned and comes into Hill Ficker at ninety degrees, right there. Where, now, move to the, now, that's the old alignment of Hill Rose. And we're gonna turn it and line it up there. Uh, because we want our intersections to intersect at ninety degrees, not at a, at a tight skew. Um, and then Hill Ficker then connects out to Battle Creek.
Okay, so then the, the section that where Hill Rose is right now, coming off of Battle Creek, that's going away?
Yes. The, the detail, yeah, so you can see that Hill Rose goes up and then turns and connects into, into Hill Ficker rather than continuing straight. Because if you continue it straight, then it comes in at a very skewed angle, and it's, and it's not very good for site distance or operation.
Right, because I mean, I've, I've had to drive down that route a few times, and there's a, a really hard turn left if you are going Battle Creek off to Pringle. And then, but if you're coming back from Pringle, that before it becomes Battle Creek, you're turned right. And that one is kind of a harder, hard right, but the left one is, is a little bit more difficult and challenging uh, to do. Thank you.
Okay. Any, any further questions?
I, I guess just, I, I, for the record, um, the steepness on Twelfth Street, I had earlier said it was nineteen percent. It's seventeen-point-nine-two percent. Um, I just want people to understand, like, it's, you know, it's, it's really steep. I mean, this is, this is an unusual uh, concerning area. I mean, they're, they're, they're making some attempt to improve it, but I'm still, I mean, this is a variance, or they're asking for an exception to the standards because of how steep this is. So, I mean, it's better, but it's still, it's concerning to me.
Sure. But the, but the street exists in that configuration today, except it's only about fifteen feet wide.
Yeah. This actually improves the street by giving it more width, is that what you're?
It, it's making it wider, it's, it's resurfacing, we're putting sidewalks along there. It's gonna, it's gonna be much better.
I mean, I guess my, my follow-up question to understand this process is, so they, they are making some improvements, and they're making it wider. So it's getting better from a certain point of view, but it's so bad, I, I, we typically don't drive this. There are other ways to go through this part of the neighborhood. Um, so we avoid it. And my concern is that even though they're making some improvements, it's going to be more used. Uh, and, and therefore, I'm not sure it evens out in the long run, my opinion.
Yeah, Councilor Stapleton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, my concern is, is that um, as we widen that road, it's only going to encourage more people to drive on it and to drive faster, which is what happens when you widen a road. Uh, you alleviate any kind of stress, or maybe not all of the stress, if it's as stupid as, as it is. But my concern is, is that as you widen that road, it's proven that folks will drive faster on it. So um, I, I guess I have now some, some questions on that as well.
Yeah, it kind of makes you wonder about Seventeenth, by just putting up a twenty-five mile-an-hour sign, you're gonna slow it down even though it's three lanes. That's kind of the same, similar concept, I think.
Right.
Yeah, well, we can put up a twenty-five mile-an-hour sign. That seems to work on Seventeenth.
Well, I'd love to make those lanes narrower on Seventeenth, see if that would work.
Well, that'd be great.
I mean, I, Mr. Mayor, like, in comparison to Seventeenth, but if Seventeenth drove off a cliff? I mean, seventeen percent is incredibly.
Drives into Silverton Road and Mission. It's not a cliff, it's just a, yeah, it's just a Speedway. I, I don't know, I, never mind, I just kind of, doesn't make it for me. Um, sounds good. Okay, let's give the, uh, I guess, Mr. Stevenson, are you gonna be the responder on this? Your turn to rebut all that you have heard.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Bennett.
Five minutes to rebut it.
Yeah, five minutes. I, I find it a dubious prospect that I'll be able to address everything. But before I do that, I just want to clarify some procedural issues. Um, I understand that uh, the council has voted to continue the hearing to the first meeting.
Not yet.
Not yet, okay.
If you've got an argument against that, give us the.
No, I, I, I was gonna make it easy for you guys, and I was gonna request, as, as is the right, uh, under ORS, uh, one ninety-seven, seven sixty-three, that we continue the hearing to the first meeting in February.
Thank you.
Um, and that will allow time, hopefully, for staff to have its folks go out there and. And that will allow time, hopefully, for staff to have its folks go out there, and we're in support of that. So I wanted to go ahead and put that on the record. You guys technically don't even have to vote on it now.
If I could ask a clarifying question to Mr. Stevenson?
Yeah.
Are you requesting the hearing be continued or the record be kept open?
I, I think in this situation, based on what I'm hearing, I, I'm thinking we should request that the hearing be continued, but if the council would rather just leave the re, record open, that's fine too. It's up to.
Let's, let's see what the council's motion sounds like. I think the record open gives us adequate opportunity to get the information we're asking for.
The point is, Mayor, I, we're willing to do that, and we're willing to give the extra time, however the council deems fit. We would like to not, for a continued hearing, though, we'd like to not let it stretch beyond the first meeting in February for the reasons that Mr. Atchison mentioned earlier.
That may be a reason not to keep the hea, not to continue the hearing, rather keep the record open.
So, given that we're going to have at least some time, I'm going to save my material rebuttal for that, that either that open record period or our continued hearing. But I just want to say that, you know, I think that all the comments we've heard are very genuine comments from anybody who lives next to a property that has been in a farm state since they can ever remember, but the fact of the matter is, from our standpoint, the policy decision about whether this property should be developed or not has already been taken by the city when it zoned it for development. And that's the second piece of planning. First, you have comprehensive planning, then you have implementation, and we are certainly firmly in the implementation phase here, because we're not asking for a zone change, we're simply asking to use the properties the city's already zoned it. The other thing is that I just want to emphasize that despite the fact that the neighborhood is opposed to this, I think that we, the applicant, have done our level best to be accessible to the neighborhood and to respond to their concerns. I think the record speaks for itself in that regard, and we're happy to have the city go out and double-check the tree inventory that we've, that we have now. With that, I want to actually, with whatever time I have left, I want to turn the mic over to Diego Argüello, who's our traffic engineer. I think it might be helpful if he reiterates some of the points that you heard Mr. Martin talk about earlier.
Okay, Diego?
Yeah, hi, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for giving me the opportunity. Started, I wanted best, I have been rehearsing on the side in case you gave me a time limit. I can do everything in two minutes, but I'm going to sound like the Micro Machine Man. Otherwise, I'll speak at a more formal tone. Thank you for that. I do have some points here. Oh, is this my time?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, then I will go fast. I want to re, did scope the process. Can we, can I get a re, can we get a restart here?
Yeah, why don't we give him a restart, but, damn it.
That's okay.
Okay, apparently, we can't get this clock, everything in the same place at once, so we'll, we'll start at two minutes and go for it.
Oh, okay, I've just started myself as well. Just wanted to reiterate that we did go through an extensive scoping process with City of Salem and planning. The study area was defined, was confirmed. I'll reiterate that, that this is about, the impacts here are about this development and not developments. So a lot of the traffic that, that was brought forth and the in-process and the background, you know, we're doing our best to estimate the background traffic, but the impact from this development are being addressed by the construction of the left-turn lanes, ensuring the site distance is met. The street through the site, which is a T S P project that this, that whether or not this, this goes forward at some point will likely be constructed. The roadway improvements that are proposed are required by the city's adopted standards, and so we're following that to the letter of the, to the letter of the code. The other component I just wanted to mention is there's been so much just now that we had fewer than trips on Battle Creek as a result of Costco. We did today, earlier today, and I testify as an expert and as a licensed traffic engineer, we did do an analysis of what those three trips would do to that intersection. The findings remain the same, and the level of service at that intersection does not change. So thank you, Tony, for stating that, but that's more the, the quantitative response. I won't get into the forty percent on Kubler, because I wasn't involved in the Costco project, and I don't want to make this about Costco. In my limited capacity, I can tell you that there was a C I P project that was happening at the same time along that, and the Kubler Commercial Intersection was since built out to try to maximize that capacity. So anything additional that was or wasn't included in terms of the traffic volumes, kind of would be out of the scale of proportionality in terms of mitigation for this project. And I just wanted to mention that. And lastly, the site distance, Del Hunting, I mentioned grade. The City of Salem does use grade, and we do have a grade that's greater than three percent. However, we can accommodate forty-five, fifty mile per hour in terms of stopping site distance with a grade greater than three percent. So that will all be addressed with design review for the design of that intersection with, and is involved with at this time for your peace of mind in terms of.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So, Counselor Hoy, do you have a motion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Excuse me, it's been a few hours since I spoke. I move, we close the public hearing and keep the record open until the first city council meeting in February.
Second by Anderson. Go ahead, Counselor, just, just a sec, Counselor Hoy, did you have anything you want to say about that motion?
I just feel like we have a lot of unanswered questions that we need more time. We've, we've given staff some direction. Although I did not include that in my motion, so if I need to, I will, it ended up maybe a second motion. But we, you know, this will give them time to get out there, get, take a look at the trees like we discussed, and get back to us, so.
Why don't you, why don't you do a substitute motion for your motion and get that in there nice and clear, so we can get a good, clear answer to that one?
Can I substitute my own motion?
Sure, why not?
All right.
It's late enough, you can do almost anything you want.
Awesome. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a substitute motion. I move, we close the public hearing, keep the record open, and direct staff to make an onsite visit to the property and verify the significant trees and report back to city council on their findings.
Second.
Second.
Okay, who's the, who's my second? Nordike? I don't, you first. Okay, Jim?
Yeah, I, real quick, the only thing that I feel is being left out is the issue of the potential litigation, and what I heard tonight from several people was that there's actually been a suit filed in Marion County Circuit Court. If that's true, that certainly affects this project, and so I'd like an answer to that. Is there a lit, is there an open litigation on this property currently?
I can answer that right now. Yes, there is, and it has no bearing on your decision.
Okay.
That's right, I'm, I'm not the developers, and I don't have to worry.
Yeah, okay. Counselor Anderson?
Yeah, thanks. I, I just want to make sure that Mr. Santana's stuff is in the record, and if it isn't in the record, I would at least affirm the amendment to Counselor Hoy that substitution that we see, make sure we have all the information that was presented tonight by Mr. Santana.
It, it, it is in the record. He testified, and it needs to be, it'll be brought in. If it isn't here in writing, I haven't had a chance to pour through everything.
Yeah, yeah.
We'll make sure it's there, yeah.
Okay, great, thanks.
You bet. Counselor Phillips, did you have?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I support this motion. I just want to understand, like, technically, is our time, if we had questions for staff, we can only ask questions now about the facts? Like, what is the, the change since the public hearing is closed in our communication with staff?
Haven't, haven't closed yet. Mr. Atchison, what's the?
So, at, at this point, you're welcome to talk to staff. You can have any conversation you want with staff. It's not an expert contact. Please do not talk to members of the public, the applicant, neighborhood associations, about the substance of the application at this point. Get the emails, send them to Lisa Anderson or myself. So once the record closes, you can continue to ask us questions. And once the record closes, we can provide whatever answers are within the record. We can't provide you wild speculation, and we can't provide you evidence that's outside the record. So the record, if the motion carries, the record will stay open till February tenth at five o'clock. And during that time, all the parties are going to be able to submit additional evidence, and we'll summarize that via staff report on the tenth or the twenty-fourth, depending on the case may be, and provide you a supplemental staff report, kind of summarizing all of that.
So just to clar, clarify that, that comment, what I'm hearing you say is that I can still talk to staff in the same way I have been talking to staff, because the, the, the record is still open in some manner?
Correct, and even after the record closes, you can continue to talk to staff.
Okay.
Yeah, it's the public, it's the, yeah, okay, that's, just so that's real clear, okay? Or at least you'll have to let us know that you had the conversation, if nothing else. Okay.
Mayor, can I clarify that the first council meeting in February is actually the fourteenth, not the tenth? So the record will close on the fourteenth, February fourteenth.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, if the recorder would please call a roll.
Counselor Nordike?
Aye.
Counselor Lewis?
Aye.
Counselor Stapleton?
Aye.
Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Phillips?
Aye.
Counselor Leon?
Aye.
Counselor Gonzalez? Counselor Hoy?
Aye.
Mayor Bennett?
Aye, okay, motion passes. Very good. Okay, we'll go to special orders of business. We've heard from Sedcor. Counselor Hoy, let's get Kristin on board here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move, city council appoint Kristen Rutherford as interim city manager effective March first, two thousand twenty-two, and update on the process to recruit a new city manager.
Second.
I'm sorry, I, I'm a little behind. I apologize.
Say again?
I, can I restate my motion?
Sure.
Thank you, it's late. I move, city council appoint Kristen Rutherford, urban development director, as interim city manager effective March first, two thousand twenty-two, period.
Second. Second by Phillips.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It is with great pleasure and great sadness that I make the motion. I'm very pleased that Kristen has agreed to accept this interim role, and I'm very sad that we're losing our very high-quality city manager, who has been a pleasure to serve with, or since I've been on city council, and so, there you go.
Yeah, I, I really want to second that. It's, we're very fortunate that Kristen agreed to step up, but it, it's, it really is going to be a, a real change without Mr. Powers here. He has been such a, a leveling influence, I think, on the council. He's just done such a good job with all of us. I'm really going to miss him. So I've got his speed dial on my, I've got him on speed dial in Marquette, and most of the time, he's going to be snowed in, so we can call him once in a while, I think, is the. So, Mr. Powers, we're going to miss you tremendously.
Thank, thank, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Hoy. Yeah, I will be frozen solid for nine months out of the year. I, I think, a little bit more, perhaps, before you vote on the motion, the city has contracted with Reptilius, the executive search firm. Heather Gantz will be the lead recruiter. Mayor Bennett, Counselors Anderson and Lewis, you, you may remember Heather. She was the recruiter that brought me to Salem. And, and she will be with Tammy's help contacting each of you, each count, the mayor and each counselor, to begin developing the profile, the recruitment profile that will be important for each of you to have input into. And also, she'll be talking with each of you regarding process, and when she has that information, she'll be able to provide us, provide you with a, a, and, and perhaps most importantly, Kristin, with their realistic and achievable timeframe for, for the recruitment process. I think you have received a general timeframe, but Heather really needs to hear from each of you regarding your expectations for the position and for the process, which will then lead to some very specific information, including a profile that will come to you at a future council meeting for adoption. And with, with Mr. Atchison's help, make sure that the, the recruitment is done in a way that is, is beneficial to council, that complies with state statute, and that is also available to the community. Thank you.
Great, great. All right, is there any further discussion? Okay, if the recorder would please call a roll.
Counselor Lewis?
Aye.
Counselor Stapleton?
Aye.
Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Phillips?
Aye.
Counselor Leon?
Aye.
Counselor Gonzalez?
Aye.
Counselor Hoy?
Aye.
Counselor Nordike?
Aye.
Mayor Bennett?
Aye, motion passes.
Mr. Mayor, I have one more motion.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I move, city council extend our meeting to ten forty-five.
Second.
Second by Stapleton. In discussion, the recorder please call a roll.
Counselor Stapleton?
Aye.
Counselor Anderson?
Reluctant, aye.
Counselor Phillips?
Aye.
Counselor Leon?
Aye.
Counselor Gonzalez?
Aye.
Counselor Hoy?
Aye.
Counselor Nordike?
Aye.
Counselor Lewis?
Any members of Commissioner, Counselor Nanty? No.
And Mayor Bennett?
Aye. Okay, motion passes. All right. Counselor Stapleton, you have a motion?
Yes, thank you. I move that city council adopt the recommendation of the Salem Human Rights Commission contained in Attachment One, and direct staff to bring back to city council recommendations for amendments to S R C Chapter ninety-seven, Human Rights, to include housing status as a protected class and revise references to gender identity and sexual orientation in S R C nine seven point zero eight five.
Second.
Very good.
Who seconded that? Okay, Counselor Hoy seconded it.
Great, thanks, everybody. Yeah, this is, I'll be really brief here, because I think we all are on board. I really just admire the work of the commission and all the commissions that do the heavy lifting for us, where they dive into these topics and, and really bring it forward to us in a way that, that makes it easy to send forward to staff to really make some changes in our code where we see black and need to better protect and be inclusive in the way that our code is structured. So I hope you'll in favor for this as well.
Okay, any discussion?
Just briefly, I, I, I support this motion. I intend to vote for it, but I, I'm curious to hear from the city manager or staff at some point, if not tonight, on where are we at with creating an equity lens? I mean, it's been about a year since we decided to move in that direction, creating it. What's the update on that?
Okay, well, we'll, we'll follow up on that at a future meeting. I think we'll get something from them if there's something in the works. I think you're right. Where are we? Okay. Anything else on this motion? Ah, there you are, Jackie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to voice my support as well. You know, I, before I joined the city council, I actually served as a commissioner with the Salem Human Rights Commission, and so to see housing, house, houseless and unsheltered be now considered a protected class, it's important to me, and I'm hoping that the rest of city councils see the importance of doing so. Thank you.
Okay. All right, if the recorder please call a roll.
Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Phillips?
Aye.
Counselor Leon?
Aye.
Counselor Gonzalez?
Aye.
Counselor Hoy?
Aye.
Counselor Nordike?
Aye.
Counselor Lewis?
Aye.
Counselor Stapleton?
Aye.
Mayor Bennett?
Aye, okay, motion passes. Just a sec here, I think it's, is it you, Vanessa, that are next?
I believe so, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Yep.
All right, very good. Thank you all. I move to direct staff to bring back to council a report regarding a mobile crisis unit pilot project. Thank you. In making this motion, I would like to get that staff report done in sixty days. And here is why, asking for this motion and the, the sense of urgency. And here is why I'm asking for this motion and the the sense of urgency behind it. The point in time counts of persons experiencing homelessness in Salem area is one thousand one hundred and seventeen as of last year. This includes a great deal of women, children, seniors, all of whom are experiencing homelessness in our area. Twenty percent of those one thousand one hundred and seventeen individuals self-reported having a serious mental illness. That's about one in five. On top of all that, we know that behavioral health needs of children and youth have grown during the COVID nineteen pandemic due to disruptions in care, isolation, financial instability and more. We know that children are experiencing behavioral health crises at an alarming rate and are increasingly being served by emergency departments. There's just a lot happening all at once right now in our community and in communities around this country. So it should really come as no surprise that we've received an outpouring of testimony in support of a mobile crisis unit. The testimony makes clear that there is a huge need for a civilian-led unit to respond to mental health crisis in persons struggling with homelessness here in town. We need police, fire and a civilian-led mobile crisis unit to respond to the full spectrum of public safety needs. This is about having the right tool for the right job. So I'm making a motion for a staff report because I want to get everyone on the same page. We need to know what it would cost, who would partner with us and how it would work with existing public safety services. Those are the reasons for my motion, and I know it's ten twenty-six P M. at night, so I'll, I will stop my remarks there. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any further discussion? Yes, Counselor Stapleton.
Thank you so much. Yeah, I would like to make an amendment to the motion to include the following. One, an update to the current mobile crisis response team program and what it would take to expand those services to twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Two, an outline of the continuum of related services currently provided, including the M C R T and lead and where a cahoots model would complement and or overlap. And three, a discussion of how this service would impact dispatch and how, excuse me, and any associated staffing, technology and protocol issues.
Second. Second by Phillips.
Thanks. It's my intent of the motion to consider a cahoots model in in the full context of a current services and not in a vacuum to make sure that we get all of the information. What I'm asking for will obviously need to be detailed in conjunction with both Marion and Polk Counties as well as the Lamont Valley Communications Center.
Thank you, Counselor.
And then.
Yes.
Yeah, so I support the the friendly amendment emphatically. We need to expand the current officer-involved crisis response unit that we have and and to look at expanding that. And then we also need to look at, you know, how do we actually move to creating the necessary infrastructure to get a civilian crisis response unit? We need both. They're different, but we need both. So I I strongly support this friendly amendment.
Okay. Any further discussion?
No, but I would just add that as part, I appreciate the friendly amendment and I will absolutely support it. And I think what it's doing is painting greater detail into the existing motion. Because if you look at the motion request, it does specifically ask how a civilian-led mobile crisis unit would fit alongside existing public safety programs such as those currently being offered, like the Salem Police Department, B H U and Marion County League. But Counselor Stapleton, I appreciate the friendly amendment and the desire for us to have all of the information necessary. So thank you for that, and I will look forward to supporting your amendment.
Yeah, I really appreciate your amendment as well. I think one of the difficulties with the cahoots model has been the the lack of or understanding of what our infrastructure looks like to provide the kind of backup services to a twenty-four-seven civilian service like this, which is is really an outstanding service. It's just what, how does that all come together? So I appreciate you pulling that in. Counselor Stapleton?
Yeah, thank you. And yeah, I I think it's it's spot on. We just need to look at this as a whole thing, right? I am in favor of increasing our behavioral units with the police officers because it's it's more than just what the cahoots model would would handle. Our entire community is in need of of officers that have this special training and who have these social workers with them. And I think that to look at it in that full context of, of course, how that's going to impact our dispatch is really important, and we need partners in this, right? We were just all at a budget meeting. We know what our budget looks like. And so to have Marion and Polk County here as partners, I think, is critical to have the success of of any kind of movement on either of these fronts.
Yeah. Counselor Leon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would also like for the city, if it's possible, city staff, if possible, specifically with the peer support specialist or P S S model, to take in consideration specifically in the state of Oregon is that there's a certified peer support specialist program that's available where they could actually, for people who work specifically with recipients of Medicaid, to bill and be reimbursed for that. So I really strongly recommend that the city staff look into that program as well. In Marion and Polk County, the C C O that would be responsible for this would be Pacific Source Community Solutions. And they have a very pretty well-organized program that's available, and I'm happy to share it with staff after after today's meeting so that you have an idea in terms of what the what the C C O, like Pacific Source, offers for peer support specialists and how they may play important, how they would play an important role in in this mobile crisis, a cahoots slash police officer model. I'm not sure what to call it at this time.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, we have an amendment on the floor. If the recorder please call a roll.
Counselor Phillips.
Aye.
Counselor Leon.
Aye.
Counselor Gonzalez.
Aye.
Counselor Hoy.
Aye.
Counselor Nordike.
Aye.
Counselor Lewis.
Aye.
Counselor Stapleton.
Aye.
Counselor Anderson.
Aye.
Mayor Bennett.
Aye. Okay, and now we'd be voting on the amended motion. Okay.
Counselor. Sure, Counselor Leon.
I'm sorry, which motion are we on right now?
Well, we've got Counselor Nordike's motion amended by Counselor Stapleton's amendment. So it's the two put together.
Thank you, aye.
Counselor Gonzalez.
Aye.
Counselor Hoy.
Aye.
Counselor Nordike.
Aye.
Counselor Lewis.
Aye.
Counselor Stapleton.
Aye.
Counselor Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Phillips.
Aye, sorry.
Mayor Bennett.
Aye, okay, motion passes. Okay, very good. That ends the, nope, three point two A, Counselor.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I'll make this quick. I move staff resolution concerning the amendments to the system development eligible charges.
Second.
Second by Hoy.
And I was only pulled this to educate the public about what systems development is, but I don't think charges are.
Thirty at night.
The public is watching.
Nobody's paying attention.
It's a good thing. We should pass it.
Okay, great. Okay, any questions?
I just want to know what, I just want to know what Counselor Anderson is going to be gifting to Mr. Davis, who had to stay here for this whole meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, geez, yeah. Enjoying lunch, nothing else.
I'll give him a hearty handshake.
Yeah, big thanks.
Yeah.
Okay, if the recorder please call a roll.
Counselor Gonzalez.
Aye.
Counselor Hoy.
Aye.
Counselor Nordike.
Aye.
Counselor Lewis.
Aye.
Counselor Stapleton.
Aye.
Counselor Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Phillips.
Aye.
Counselor Leon.
Aye.
Mayor Bennett.
Aye, okay, motion passes. Information reports. Any, anybody want some information on the information reports or?
Mr. Mayor, I would suggest on item six A that we just have that conversation at our work session that's coming up next Tuesday.
Yeah, I think everyone ought to come prepared to have a have a real serious look. I think our, I think Noel brought some interesting things to the table, talking about it, but I there's a lot to talk about in this all the way around. And a lot to learn about just how good these programs really are. I think that's probably the biggest lesson we'll all pick up.
And I would suggest that any counselors who haven't visited one of those do so before Tuesday so you can get a real hands-on look at what they look like.
Yeah, yeah, this is, this is good stuff. Okay, first reading.
Ordinance Bill number one twenty-two, an ordinance declaring certain territory located at Ash Grove subdivision and adjacent lands northeast annexed to the city of Salem prescribing zoning and withdrawing the territory from the East Salem Sewer and Drainage District and Marion County Fire District number one.
Counselor Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move city council advance ordinance bill number one dash twenty-two approving annexation, applying city zoning and approving withdrawal from the East Salem Sewer and Drainage District and Marion County Fire District number one for a territory of approximately three point three acres located at Ash Grove subdivision and adjacent lands. The second reading for enactment.
Second.
Second by Stapleton. Okay, let's call a roll on this.
Counselor Hoy.
Aye.
Counselor Nordike.
Aye.
Counselor Lewis.
Aye.
Counselor Stapleton.
Aye.
Counselor Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Phillips.
Aye.
Counselor Leon.
Aye.
Counselor Gonzalez.
Aye.
Mayor Bennett.
Aye, okay, motion passes, go to second readings.
Ordinance Bill number fifteen twenty-one, an ordinance declaring certain territory located at sixty-five sixty-five Sunnyside Road Southeast annexed to the city of Salem prescribing zoning and withdrawing the territory from the Salem Suburban Rural Fire Protection District. Counselor Nordike.
Aye.
Counselor Lewis.
Aye.
Counselor Stapleton.
Aye.
Counselor Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Phillips.
Aye.
Counselor Leon.
Aye.
Counselor Gonzalez.
Aye.
Counselor Hoy.
Aye.
Mayor Bennett.
Aye. Passes.
And finally, ordinance bill number sixteen twenty-one, an ordinance declaring and proclaiming certain territory located at forty-one twenty Fisher Road Northeast and adjacent lands northeast annexed to the city of Salem prescribing zoning and withdrawing the territory from the East Salem Sewer and Drainage District and Marion County Fire District number one. Counselor Lewis.
Well, I have to take this opportunity to once again say that for the second time in my career, I get to go first twice in one meeting. I take that to be evidence that the meeting is way too long.
Counselor Stapleton.
Aye.
Counselor Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Phillips.
Aye.
Counselor Leon.
Aye.
Counselor Gonzalez.
Aye.
Counselor Hoy.
Aye.
Counselor Nordike.
Aye.
Mayor Bennett.
Aye, okay, passed. And that's it. So we are adjourned.
For more videos and for more information, go to capitalcommunitymedia.org and follow us on social media.